But I also, for people who have our calendar, want you to know that we're going to skip forward, and we have an interview for a Human Relations Commission that's scheduled for later this evening. Is Alex Coleman here? So, we're going to start our meeting off, because I gather you have a place you have to be. Therefore, if you would mind coming up to our microphone, because we're being videotaped, and therefore you can not only be seen but heard.
Hi.
Welcome, and just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Human Relations Commission.
I'm interested in -- I'm a clinical psychologist. I'm also an attorney. I've worked with youth both -- in both hats. For many years, I represented abused and neglected indigenous children and their families in cases of neglect and abuse. I'm transsexual, and I've been part of the LGBTQ community for a very long time. And I've had -- I'm currently on the Board of Directors of the Mass LGBTQ Bar Association, and I'm active member in the Massachusetts Transgender Political Coalition. I work clinically as well as legally around issues of gender identity and expression. I went to law school as a woman at a time when women weren't in law school, so I know gender discrimination. I'm a single parent of a student who went through the Brookline Schools from K through high school, and is currently teaching in Lincoln Sudbury, as a matter of fact. And the reason that I'm interested is that I feel I have a lot to offer. I am very familiar working across racial, ethnic, religious, nationality, language, socioeconomic class, and I'm sure I'm leaving out many other of the protected classes. But I actually, throughout my whole career, I've always been sensitive to the ways in which there's a lot of overlap in the issues confronting people who are outside of the mainstream.
Okay. Just, I -- you may or may not have this background, but we are currently reviewing the bylaw that established the Human Relations Commission, and if we meet our deadlines and goals, Selectmen Daly's committee will be making a recommendation that will go to town meeting in May, and therefore will probably -- the recommendation will probably include some kind of reorganization. We don't know what it is yet. So, are you aware of that ongoing process?
Yes, I am, and it's with that expectation that I'm applying.
Okay. Because the appointments we make now will probably be considered transitional up until whatever the bylaw turns out to be. Anyway, questions for Mr. Coleman? Yes, Selectmen Daly.
Well, I should say Alex's son went to school with my kids at Runcle, so I've known him for many years. But I note that you say what type of -- and the question, what type of issues would you like to see this commission address? And you mentioned educational efforts, collaborative discussion on different inclusion issues. I just wonder if you can elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. The way that I have tried to approach things throughout my life has been really to build bridges, to work collaboratively, to try to understand what the system is within -- and the context within which issues need to be addressed. Oftentimes, I find that telling stories of people's actual experiences, educating around issues. Oftentimes prejudice comes out of ignorance. Sometimes it comes out of hatred, but a lot of times it comes out of ignorance, and I think education is a big part of it. I think that very often there are well-meaning people who do things unintentionally that are harmful, and I think trying to find ways to help people do the right thing more often. I think that oftentimes groups are pitted against each other for a slice of the pie, and I think that's detrimental. I think it's very important for people to not fight with each other about who's being discriminated against more, but to find ways that all of us can be discriminated against less, and be given equal access and fairness and opportunity.
Other members have questions for Mr. Coleman? No?
No, I -- very --
Sure.
I'm sorry. I see that -- and you mentioned that you have a law degree, but I -- just from looking at your resume, I take it that your primary focus now is you're practicing as a psychologist?
Primarily, although I do work in terms of, for example, I'm the Chair of the Legislative Commission -- Committee.
Okay.
Commission. Committee of the LGBTQ Bar Association, and in that context, I work on promoting legislation that would make things more equal and fair, such as the Equal Access Bill for transgender, gender nonconforming people. And I also work addressing issues of, like, for example, amicus briefs that are relevant. But in terms of actually representing people at this point in time, I sort of have let that go. I have a part-time practice, and as I get older, I have more interest in doing more of my volunteer work.
Fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, I think my questions --
Selectmen Goldstein?
My question's been answered.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the board? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your interest. We are, we hope, going to be able to make our appointments next week. We have at least one more interview before we'll be completed, so you will hear from us before the end of the year, I hope.
Thank you, and I appreciate you taking me out of order. I know that was an accommodation. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we will return to our usual calendar, and I'm going to start with some announcements. Continuing Holiday Marketplace at the -- to Brookline Place in Brookline Village on Saturday, noon to 5:00. The Winter Farmers Market continues on Sundays from noon to 5:00 in the Arcade Building in Coolidge Corner. And something that I think is very important at this time of year, it is the 19th year that town employees in Town Hall or at the Town Hall employees, but the physical locus is Town Hall, is hosting an annual toy drive. All of the toys are donated either by Brookline employees or Brookline residents. Every year, the list of children has grown longer. So far this year, the children's requests are ranging in age from 11 months to 18 years old. If anyone knows of a family in need, please tell them to contact Town Council's office at (617) 730-2190, or Tim Sullivan, who is in the Town Mailroom, at (617) 730-2186. We're asking for all donations by Thursday next week, December 19th. And if anyone is willing to donate toys, please drop off new and unwrapped toys to one of the following locations: sixth floor of Town Hall in Town Council's office, in the mailroom print shop, which is in the basement of Town Hall, in the Health Department in the train building at the Veterans Office, in the Police Department on the first floor, and also at the Council on Aging in the Senior Center. And we thank everyone on behalf of the organizers who can offer donations to the toy drive, and particularly the employees of the town who sponsor this every year for the last 19 years. And finally, from me, anyway, today in South Africa, there was a memorial service celebrating the life of Nelson Mandela, and early this morning, I heard a powerful and moving speech by our President Obama. Locally, there have been observations and also candlelight vigils. Nelson Mandela was an international leader who gave inspiration for negotiation and reconciliation as a way of ending violence and to resolve differences. He survived harsh imprisonment by the apartheid government, and yet also found a way for inclusion and respect for all racial and ethnic groups in a country whose people had been rigidly categorized by apartheid as well as by tribal rivalries. He knew that education for all is powerful and critical. He studied the history of the Afrikaner people as well as learning to speak their language in the belief that both knowing the opposition and having good communications would help to end conflict. Like Martin Luther King, he leaves us with a legacy and a responsibility to work together to achieve equality, democracy, peace, racial, and social justice for all. Other comments?
No, I'm glad you mentioned that. It's the tributes and learning more about his life on TV the last few nights has been very moving.
Yeah, I would agree.
So, could I go from international to very local?
Of course.
I actually would like to deliver a couple of shout-outs. The first is to two local hotels. Edie Brickman, who's a town meeting member, had learned that the food pantry needed toiletries, and Edie thought to call the local hotels in town. She called the Marriott, and it turned out that the Marriott was in the process of switching over their in-room products from one product line to another product line.
They had a few spares.
And they said, "We have three packages for you." So she apparently went there with her cart, expecting to pick up three small packages, and it turned out that they had three cases.
Cartons.
Cases of soap and shampoo and whatever that they provided to the Brookline food pantry, and I think much appreciated. She then called the Holiday Inn, and they were not switching over their product line, but it turned out this was right after Thanksgiving, and they had leftover turkeys in their freezer.
[laughing]
And they have made those available to the food pantry, and the food pantry has, on a space-available basis, been getting those frozen turkeys to distribute. So, both of these hotels, members of the Brookline business community responded to this request for the food pantry, and I just wanted to mention that. And also mention Edie Brickman, who made the effort to pursue these issues.
Very good, with great success.
And then I'd also just like to give a shout-out to the police, who are here for the respectful way in which they are delivering their message.
Other comments from members of the board? No?
Nope.
Our town administrator wants to give us a little bit of an update on other matters.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As has been reported, an employee within the Department of Public Works's Transportation Office was arrested last week on charges of larceny by embezzlement. The Police Department became involved after it was brought to town management's attention by the public works supervisors in that office that they had reason to suspect this individual was stealing cash from the sale of parking permits. The employee was arraigned and will be entitled to a trial. Because this is an ongoing criminal investigation, I'm somewhat limited in the statements I can make. However, I can say that this alleged conduct is in violation of the town's policy against fraudulent conduct, misappropriation, and corruption for which the town takes very seriously. And last -- late last week, an administrative investigation hearing was held, and that individual in question has been terminated from his employment with the town. My focus at this point is to thoroughly investigate this matter in order to understand how this scheme was undertaken, and how the town can prevent it from happening again, or at the very least, what practices can be put into place to limit the town's exposure. I have assigned the Director of Finance and the Town Comptroller to commence this investigation immediately, taking care to coordinate with the Police Department to support their criminal investigation. Finally, the town has made a claim on an insurance policy it maintains, and we will aggressively pursue restitution to make the town whole from this financial loss. I want to assure the board and the citizens of Brookline that we're very deeply upset about this incident, and how uncharacteristic it is of the commitment that town employees make every day to public service and to ethical conduct.
Thank you. Selectmen Daly?
Can I just add that we're going to reconvene the Audit Committee, and Mr. Kleckner will come before us, and perhaps the Audit Committee will have some further suggestions as to how to close any possible gaps.
Sure. Okay. We'll move on now to our regular miscellaneous calendar. The first item is minutes from December 3rd. Are there additions and corrections from members of the board?
I do have some edits. I have some edits.
Then I move that we approve the minutes from December 3rd as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
I'm staying.
Ah, you were here. And Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is a review of solar energy services contract for the Karene Pool. Ms. Goff?
Hi. So I'm not sure if you got my memo from yesterday. I didn't see it in my packet. Not sure if you --
Yes.
Okay, so you did get the update. So, I was hoping that we would be here tonight to review a solar energy management services contract that then would enable us to put a solar installation on the Karene Pool at the beginning of the year. We heard yesterday from our solar developer that due to delays on the utility side with the interconnection, that we're going to have to wait for the second program, SREC 2, that the state will be finalizing in February, March, and then we'll be able to move forward with the contract. So, we'll continue negotiating with the developer, and then prior to bringing a contract in front of you, we'll have a presentation from Cadmus, who is our owner's agent, which is helping us walk through the process. And then hopefully sometime in the early spring, we'll have a contract for you to vote on.
And I understood that there was another roof that was also being under consideration now because we're going into the second program. Will the library roof also be part of that consideration?
Library was always one of the sites that we had our eyes on. The Karene Pool is another site, and the Sycamore Tree Hill reservoir.
Right.
And, you know, we'll continue to look at all the other roofs as they continue to get, you know, reviewed and renovated, so.
Well, I'm sorry we missed the deadline or whatever else happened, but anyway, are there other questions for Ms. Goff? No? Thank you. Keep us updated as things change. We have a donation for the Fire Department Chief. I didn't recognize you without your --
Epilex.
Epilex, and your hat, and your --
If you would excuse me, I'm a little casual tonight.
You are welcome even as a casual person.
It's just like, I'm always teasing Chief O'Leary that he puts on all the fancy uniform when he's asking for money, so. And it may be also, in this case, where you're telling us, "You've already got some money. You can dress as casual."
Can I go change?
[laughing]
Well, I'm before you tonight asking that we -- you allow me to accept the donation from the Blakely Group. They called up recently and just wanted to know who to make a check out, who wanted to donate a little money, so they've sent us a check for $300. What we normally do with something like that is we have a gift account that we put into. For when we find the need that we don't have budgeted for, that a small item that we can purchase from it, and that's what I'd like to do with it.
Okay. Well, any questions for the Chief?
No.
No, I'm not familiar with the Blakely Group.
I believe they're involved in real estate.
Yeah, I think they are.
But I'm unfamiliar with them, too.
Well, I want to, you know, say thank you to them. This is very nice, and we always appreciate people who understand what great service they get from this town, and particularly the Fire Department.
Absolutely. Okay. I move that we accept a $300 donation from the Blakely Group to be added to the gift account in the Fire Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yes, right. Informally. Is Mr. Quigley or Mr. Simmons with us?
I think they are probably still at the Building Commission meeting, making their way up.
Maybe we should skip --
Probably.
Well, these are pretty small. I know. I'm perfectly willing to take them on without any further discussion. I mean, with, you know, obviously a review of what's before us, but so I would say we have a rebate in the amount of $500 from National Grid with regard to repairs at the Devotion House. And I'm assuming that the roofing at the Unified Arts Building Project, it's a change order. It seems not to be particularly -- I mean, from what I noticed here, it didn't seem to have a very complicated history. There's also a change order for Town Hall garage repairs. Any questions from members of the board with regard to the documents we've received on those three items? If you don't have any concerns or questions, we can just move them and go forward.
I'm willing to go forward.
Okay. Then I will move that we accept a rebate in the amount of $500 from National Grid in connection with energy-efficient repairs at Devotion House. And I will move that we approve change order number four in the amount of $2,260.65 for Titan -- work from Titan Roofing in connection with the Unified Arts Building Roof Project. And I move that we approve change order number three in the amount of $9,655.42 for work in connection with the Town Hall Garage Repairs Phase III. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the next item is a committee of seven for designer selection for renovations at the Old Lincoln School. Is there anyone here who is --
I'm willing to --
Leap forward.
I will leap forward. I'm willing to do that.
Okay. Fine. Then I move that we appoint Selectmen Daly to chair the committee of seven, and I assume the other members are going to be brought forward to us by the Building Commission.
They're listed on here.
Oh.
David Pollack, Abby Cox, Helen Charlopsky, George Cole, Karen Brzlofsky, and George Trump.
Oh, you're absolutely right. Okay. Then we appoint those individuals with Selectmen Daly to chair a committee of seven for renovations at the Old Lincoln School. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, a couple of hour and temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. I think they're pretty straightforward, so I'm going to move these again as a series. First, I move that we approve the request of Alavista Doing Business as Vernissage Restaurant for an extension of hours on New Year's Eve from 5:00 p.m. to midnight to 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. I move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a fundraiser on December 15th. And I'm going to move those two, and then the next one's a little bit more complicated. So, all in favor of those two items, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, we have a matter that's -- I think we're collecting -- we're correcting a technical error. We approved the transfer for Cognac Bistro to a new owner with a distribution of stockholders, and somehow, in the process of documentation, there was an error. So, I have a little information before we take a vote. We have a request for reapproval of the application of Cognac Incorporated Doing Business as Cognac Bistro, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common victular at 455 Harvard Street for the transfer of said license to the Sahib Group Doing Business as Shen Punjab Mandip Sanhu President. This request was made by the attorney for the group, Mark Zurov. He has informed us in letter and emails that -- before you and materials that the application was submitted to the ABCC for approval, and ABCC noticed a discrepancy in the application in the number of stockholders from the Sahib Group. So, in one document, it listed three people: Mandip Sanhu with 69% of stock, Gurmuk Singh with 30%, and Manju Kaushal with 1%. Elsewhere, it only listed the first two stockholders without the person with 1%. The ABCC is holding up its approval pending confirmation that this board, the Board of Selectmen, approved the transfer to the Sahib Group with only the first two named stockholders, and we will adjust the percentages so that the vote would be to transfer -- to have two stockholders. One is Mr. Mandip Sanhu with 70%, and one is Gurmuk Singh with 30%. The stock has not yet been issued, and therefore, the 1% stockholder can forego her shares at this time, and the matter will then be rectified. On behalf of his clients, Mr. Zurov requests that the board approve -- reapprove this transfer with the two stockholders' name. So, it's complicated, but I think we're only correcting what probably was an error in transcription.
It was not our error.
Not our error either. It could -- I would say honestly, I believe it was ABCC's error.
It wasn't. It was actually the applicant's error.
Oh, okay.
When they applied to the town, they had the 1% owner. When they applied to the ABCC, they omitted the 1% shareholder.
Oh, they left the name off the form.
And rather than go back and correct the ABCC application, they thought it would be simpler to just eliminate the 1% owner that had approved.
Got it.
As long as they're eliminating and not adding, I think it's --
It's okay. And apparently, subsequently, they could come back and add that other owner if they want to, the other person, if they wish to.
It's a normal interest anyways.
Yeah, right, right. All right. So, it's sort of a complicated explanation, but unless there are questions, members of the board, then I will move that we reapprove the application of Cognac Incorporated, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverages license as a common victular at 455 Harvard Street for the transfer of said license to Sadhib Group Doing Business as San Punjab Mandip Sanhu President, with stockholders being Mandip Sanhu at, sorry, 70%, and Gurmuk Singh as a 30% stockholder. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. We're not quite on schedule, but we're getting better. Next item is filling a vacancy at the library, Mr. Flaherty. You have lost a reference librarian. How did you do that? They're important people.
Good evening, folks. Chuck Flaherty. I'm going to blame Lexington, unfortunately.
Ah, was not lost, but stolen? Is that what you're trying to say?
Megan Parker was a wonderful addition to our staff. Unfortunately, she was only with us for about a year and a half. She held an entry-level librarian one position here, did good work for us, and was lured away by one of the other better libraries in the state. So, I'm happy for Megan. I'm disappointed for us. It's been a particularly difficult time for us. We've had a number of illnesses in this department over the last several months, prolonged illnesses that have kept people out of work, and it's been -- it's been a real challenge to keep our heads above water. The timing of this departure is not good for us, but it is what it is. When you hire good people, this is the risk you take, and but there's no other way to go about it. So, we will post the position and hopefully find someone who will fill her shoes well.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you. Mr. Flaherty, I just want to know that you're going to make every effort to spread the net in your search as wide as possible, look for a diverse applicant pool, an inclusive applicant pool.
Absolutely. I've been in touch with HR on this issue. The board and I take very seriously our responsibility, we feel, to present a staff that reflects the diversity in the community, and we will do our best to see that we cast as wide a net as possible. Thank you.
Any other -- yes, Selectmen Binka?
Just a comment. Since we're talking about reference librarians, I actually was in the library the other day to look at Consumer Reports, and I learned that I didn't even have to go in.
That's correct.
To look at Consumer Reports.
That's correct. The publishers have really struggled with licensing of electronic resources, and that was a big one. When we were -- we have offered it in the library electronically for many years, but it's only been recently that we've been able to allow patrons to access Consumer Reports from home. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to publicize that a bit more in the community.
So now I can look through it in my pajamas.
That's quite a sight.
Too much information.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for our librarian? Then I move that we authorize filling a vacancy in the position of Librarian One in the Library Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck. Next is a candidate for the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. Is Mr. Usamenu Nsangu here? Okay, then maybe we'll move on and schedule him later. That being the case, our next item is the long-range financial forecast. So, Mr. -- yep, yep, yep. I'm going to invite Mr. Cronin to come and get his techie stuff set up, and I'm going to turn the mic over to the town administrator.
Yes, well, I'll just make some brief introductory comments while Mr. Cronin is setting up. And this presentation, as you know, is the kickoff to our annual budget process, which is a multi-month process. And it starts with a projection, an early projection of both of our operating and our capital expenses. And we do that, both of those, in a multi-year approach so that although it's really legally, we can only adopt one budget per year, we like to do that in the context of a longer-term plan. The only thing I would say this year is that's different than most years, is that we do have a parallel process going on where the Board of Selectmen and the school committee have established an override study committee to evaluate the possibility of additional revenue supporting both capital and operating expenses. And the committee is obviously right in the middle of that. And so it creates some uncertainty, of course, as to whether or not, you know, what our revenues are going to be. I want to be clear that this presentation, at least on the operating, well, on both operating and capital, makes certain assumptions, and we'll try to make those as clear as possible, and talk about alternatives depending on which way the override study committee may make its recommendations. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Sean, and afterwards, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, great. Well, Steve and I are here tonight to go through the long-range financial plan. As Mel said, we'll try not to make it too boring for you. But as Mel said, this is very different than it has been many a year that I can remember because of the override study committee process going on. But we, we hope we put a visual package here together for you that you'll at least walk away with some understanding as to what needs to take place over the next couple of months, because we have to have a budget before you by February 15th. So summary, and actually, I do want to walk through this one because this is, this is kind of, as it says, it summarizes everything that Steve and I are about to go through. It's still all about enrollment in the schools. Enrollment growth continues. And because of that, it continues to put stress on the school budget, and actually, because of the way the town-school partnership works, on the town budget, and obviously on the capital budget, which we'll talk about after this agenda item. So in terms of dollars, which is what this presentation's supposed to be about, pretend for a minute there's no enrollment growth in the schools, and what we'd be talking about is a structural deficit in the school side of about $750,000. And on the town side, would be balanced. And the primary reason for the school deficit is special education growth, step-in lane increases, and assumptions behind collective bargaining. I should say upfront that no contracts are in place yet for any town or school union, so there are assumptions built in here. And I do want to note that when we presented to the override study committee a month ago, this figure was slightly higher, and that's because since then, we've worked with the schools on their assumptions for growth, and we were able to bring down the increase, projected increase for special education. So we set about a million-dollar deficit back in November 13th. Now we're at about 750. Now to get in the real world, enrollment growth is a big item, as I said. And the estimate for what we call base growth, and we'll explain that in a minute when we get to so-called catch-up, is about a million dollars. So town-school partnership has split that 50/50 over the last two years, and we're going to assume that that split has continued. So it's a half a million dollar increase to the school deficit of 750. That brings you up to 1.25 million dollar deficit on the school side. And the town side goes from a small surplus to a deficit of about $200,000. You should note that these figures don't take into account the school's projected surplus in fiscal '14 of $400,000. They presented to the school committee a month or so ago that there could be a surplus in '14 primarily due to some steps they've taken to slow the growth in special education. So if that were to materialize, then that would mean that they'd have the ability to hold on to some reserves that they had planned to use on fiscal '14, in fiscal '14, that they could then bring to the table for fiscal '15. So while it's not in these numbers, it's not part of the town-school split, it is an asset that they'd be able to bring to the table. Schools presented to the override study committee this concept of catch-up, which is, since enrollment growth has started about five or six years ago, they've been able to keep up with core, the base costs, or the base items like teachers and supplies and those types of things. But in their estimation, some items have fallen behind, such as guidance counselors, nurses, central admin, those types of things that, based upon their presentation, they believe should grow with enrollment. And that cost in the first year was 3.2 million dollars, as presented. So if you were to take the structural deficit and then add an enrollment growth, that's your 1.25 million dollar deficit in the school side, add the catch-up, you're talking four and a half million dollar structural shortfall in the school budget and a couple hundred thousand dollar shortfall in the town budget. And then lastly, none of these figures assume, we'll get to this toward the end a little bit, any costs associated with an education technology plan that they also presented to the override study committee last Wednesday night. And the first year cost of that is about 1.3 million dollars. The primary assumptions, and Steve will certainly go through this in more detail on the revenue side, and I will on the expenditure side. Property taxes obviously go to the maximum two and a half. I want to highlight now, even though we'll talk a lot more about it on the capital side, we're assuming a debt exclusion for the devotion school project at this time. A lot more work needs to go into the analysis that's being done by the override study committee in terms of, do we actually need the devotion, the Driscoll, and the high school projects? If the answer's ultimately no, then some or all of that project would not need to be debt excluded, and we'll talk about that more on the capital side. Again, Steve will go through the assumptions behind the revenue items. I'll go through the assumptions on the expenditure side. And then just before I turn it over to Steve, I always kind of like to walk, you know, walk down memory land here a little bit. FY '08, pretty dire budget, well, leading, in '08, it was a bad budget. We addressed a 3.2 million dollar budget gap. '09 was looking even worse. The override study committee at that point in time established, recommended a 6.2 million dollar override. That was ultimately approved by the voters. Fiscal '10 was a very difficult budget. We had a $5 million budget deficit that we were able to close primarily through the recommendations made by the efficiency committee. And you'll see that the primary cause of that deficit was a near 20% cut in our state aid. Fiscal '11 was probably the easiest budget I know I've ever worked on. That was when we entered into the, entered the GIC. There was a 5.6 million dollar savings. We actually had a multimillion dollar reduction in the group health line item, which is something, I don't know if we'll ever see again. But that made that budget pretty, pretty easy. '12, '13, and '14 is where we've seen this dynamic, where we come to you in December and say, geez, the town side looks pretty good, but the school side has some problems, primarily enrollment-related. And fiscal '15 is no different. So with that, what we have, and this is the annual blizzard of the numbers slide, the one thing I do want to, two things I want to highlight is down here at the bottom, none of these figures up top talk or address the costs associated with the enrollment catch-up that I just talked about, or the ed technology plans. This 1.25 is what I just talked about, that would be the school's deficit prior to those items. And here's the town's deficit of approximately a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then you'll see over a period of time, and I know we like to explain each year, this is cumulative, but each year, you know, if you subtract these two numbers, you'll see that there's a structural deficit built in there of a couple million dollars each year. And you can see that the deficit is predominantly in the, on the school side of the budget on an annual basis. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve, and he'll walk through the revenue assumptions.
I'm going to take you through several slides of, on the revenue side of this forecast. First, and you've seen many of these slides before, the first slide we present is a composition of our revenue mix. And this is for fiscal '14. You see roughly 77% of all our revenue comes from property tax, with a little state aid and local receipts and other miscellaneous material. 80%, 80% of the operating budget is supported by the operating budget as well. The next slide is just a simple comparison between fiscal '04 and fiscal '14. At period, 11-year period, you see slight shifts in our revenue mix where local receipts and state aid are declining slightly, and the revenue, the shortfall is made up by increases, slight increases in property tax. The next slide, of course, is the revenue for fiscal '15. We are anticipating roughly an 8.6 million dollar increase in the general revenues, however, a 2.6 million dollar decrease in free cash, so we net out at $6 million of increase, or 2.6%. However, I'd like to point out that the operating budget revenue is 7.6 million, or 3.4%. Property tax, this is where we get most of our revenue, and some interesting things are in this slide. Of course, we, we start with a new growth estimate of 1.7. That is our estimate that we use, we have been using over the last couple of years. You do see in fiscal year '16 and out, to the out-years, an increase in new growth. What that is composed of is some new growth for the Red Cab property on Boylston Street in fiscal year '16 and '17. I believe we have $325,000 in each of those two years. And then starting in fiscal '17 through, I believe, fiscal year '20, we have put in some new growth estimate for the Brookline Place project. Also, I want to point out that the 121A issued that $350,000 in fiscal year '17, that is a property that's currently on 121A. That's the Village at Brookline property. I believe it's a Wynn property. And that's coming off of the 121A and going back onto the tax rolls in fiscal year '17. So we, we're seeing an average of about, well, 3.4% of revenue increase in property tax, and a slight growth in the out-years because of some of that estimated or anticipated new revenue. State aid, we're assuming an increase of about a million dollars. And there's another slide later on in my presentation, a couple of slides forward, that will more clearly depict what we're talking about here. But the $1 million is in chapter 70. Everything else is essentially level-funded, and we, we're anticipating roughly a 2.5%, 2.4% increase in the out-years. This slide is, I love that line sliding in here. This basically just tries to show you that, where we were in state year, state aid, the history of state aid. And we always try to point out that we finally have reached the high point in our state aid that we, we had attained in fiscal year '02. We finally, after losing ground a couple of years, we finally got back to that in fiscal '14. Now to the slide that shows the chapter eight, chapter 70 increase. In 2014, we were declared, I guess, a foundation budget. The, when the, when the required net school spending matches the foundation budget, the Commonwealth has a policy of increasing or targeting chapter 70 state aid to 17.5%. Now, obviously, that would be a very large increase in the Brookline's state aid. So the, the state has been increasing this slightly over the last couple of years. It went to 10,369 and a 15.6% in fiscal '14, the current year. We're anticipating another million dollar increase in this for fiscal 15, fiscal '15, which would bring us to about 16.4%, which means that, assuming the state does not change the policy of chapter 70, that there should be some growth in fiscal '16 and fiscal '17 until we get to that 17.5% increase. Local receipts, slight growth, 651,000, mostly in the big categories, motor vehicle excise, building permits, local option taxes. We look at the actuals for fiscal year '13. We look at the year-to-date. I believe we looked at year-to-date through, at the end of October, maybe early into November, before making these adjustments. So we believe that the revenue growth, the actual growth from prior years indicates that we could increase our local receipts by this amount. And in the out-years, we're just, as a way to anticipate some growth in some revenues, we're anticipating a 1% increase in future years in the total revenue mix. Other available funds, the most interesting thing about this slide is the overlay surplus, $1 million. That $1 million is, the Board of Assessors have officially voted to release that $1 million, or will be applied against, it's one-time monies, will be applied against capital. And there are some slight other increases to overhead charges of golf, recreation, water. And those are just essentially adjusting for health insurance, essentially. Finally, the free cash. Free cash was certified at 7.1 million. We have adopted a policy a few years ago that leaves some money unappropriated in future years. So as we've done in the past, we're leaving $2 million out of the mix, and it just left an undesignated fund balance. We'll show you that in the next slide. That leaves us 15, excuse me, $5,840,000, of which we have a decision tree based on those policies you see above, how we distribute them, where we replenish our liability fund, our stabilization, no, well, stabilization fund. We have a piece of money that goes to the annual reserve, and also some money that goes to affordable housing. And all other money there goes to the capital improvements, so 4.148 million dollars in addition to that $1 million of overlay, in addition to the 6% that's in our operating budget for capital, would all go for capital improvements.
Steve?
Yep.
Why is the free cash for appropriation 7.6 when we were certified at 7.1?
No, 7.6 is for 2014. We, we were, our fiscal year '13 year-end free cash was certified at 7.1, and that's used for fiscal '15 operating budget. Because it's simple timing. We get certification of free cash halfway through the next fiscal year, and the budget's already been approved. So we use it prospectively in the next operating budget.
I got it. Steve, could you explain the leaving $2 million for fund balance purposes?
Yeah, I'm going to do that right now.
Great.
Uh-huh.
Took the words right out of your mouth.
This is, and this is something, I believe that we...
Moody's. It's Moody's fund, isn't it?
We, the town, should take great pride in. For a number of years, we were getting reports from Moody's saying that they were concerned about our undesigned fund balance dropping. And some of that was the effect of how we were dealing with funding our reserve fund. We were taking our reserve fund out of free cash as well. That was a change that happened in the 2003, 2004. So we were getting close to getting to 10% or below, and that's, I guess, the benchmark in which the rating agencies begin to look and wonder if we should be, continue to be rated as a AAA. So two years ago, we reviewed the policy, and we changed our policy to drive our undesigned fund balance, or maintain our undesigned fund balance, above 10%. So we leave some of the free cash that has been certified in our fund balance unappropriated. Last year, we did 2 million. I believe the year before, we did 1.8 million. This year, again, we're anticipating of that 7.1 million, that we would leave 2 million unappropriated. And that should bring us for fiscal year '13 to a 11% undesigned fund balances. Above, above 10, I'd love it to be 15, but I'll be very sad, I will be accepting of the 11%. Now, that's all I have for revenue, but I'll be here at the end of Sean's presentation to answer any other questions you might have about revenue.
All right, so Steve said where we get it, and we're going to go through where it goes. So in fiscal '14, current fiscal year, general fund budget of 229 million, and no surprise, And no surprise, we've talked about every year, more than three-quarters of the budget goes to wages and benefits because local government is basically a service industry. We also like to highlight each year, because of the way we budget, if you take the school appropriation divided by the total, it's, it only looks like about a third of our budget is for schools, as we know that that's certainly not the case. So what we do in this slide is we pull out all the expenses for school purposes that are embedded in the town budget, things like benefits, debt service, utilities, the parent maintenance, those types of things, out of the town budgets and put it into the school budget. And you see that more than 50% of the town's budget goes to education, which is something I think most people would expect to see. In terms of what we're projecting for fiscal '15, schools, $2.5 million increase. A million of that is due to the enrollment growth issue that we talked about earlier. Half a million is the increase in special education. $750,000 is net step in lane increases. And $250,000 is basic inflation. Town side, got about $400,000. $250 of that is step increases. And 100, since we have three elections in fiscal '15 instead of one in the current fiscal year, that's about another $100,000 of costs. So that's pretty much the growth on the town side. Town-wide collective bargaining, again, no contracts in place. We've assumed 2%. On the town side, that's about $1 million. On the school side, that's about $1,003 or $1,004. But they also have what's called a tail in their current '14 contract, meaning there's some last-day items. So they kick in on June 30th, '14, no cost until fiscal '15, and that's about $550,000. So even without any new contract, there's a need there of $550,000. Benefits, we'll go through that in great detail in a little bit. And then, capital, here, here, and Steve mentioned the overlay surplus. So these three items there support capital, which we'll talk about in the next presentation. So we're going to spend a little bit on benefits because it is a very sizable and growing part of our budget. We anticipate an increase of 1.3 million or 2.6%. That should seem low, and that's because it's a mathematical thing. We used a fair amount of free cash in the current fiscal year to augment some benefit-related funds. So if you back those out, the real increase is 2.7 million or 5.5%. And where we put the money in fiscal '14, we put a half a million dollar one-time infusion into the pension system, an additional half a million dollars into our OPEB fund, also put some money into our workers' comp and unemployment. So they're in the base in '14 and those numbers there, but then you pull them out in '15. So you get that slightly misleading $1.3 million increase in benefits overall. So the three, the big three here, health insurance, pensions, and OPEBs. Health insurance, total budget of about $26 million. We're assuming a 5% rate increase. We won't know that number for real until the first week of March. We're hoping that it's less than 5%. Each 1%, as it says there, is about $240,000. We also assume enrollment growth of about 40, and that's primarily related to the student enrollment growth in the school side. With that, you need more teachers. They're going to enroll into health insurance. So we assume that increase here in the, in the health insurance budget. Pensions, a, on paper, $500,000 increase. But again, if you back out the half a million dollars on a one-time basis in fiscal '14, you really have a million dollar increase, which is a 5.9% increase. And that's according to our schedule approved by PARAC. New fund, when we're here a year from now, we'll be talking about a new two-year funding schedule. The actuary will begin her work after the first of the year into the spring. In OPEBs, we continue to follow the plan that we've been following since the OPEB task force completed their work a few years ago. We're increasing the ongoing budget from 2.2 to 2.45, and that's that $250,000 annual growth. So this budget, or this projection stays true, true to that. And we continue to assess the special revenue funds for their costs. And we also continue to use the Medicare Part D subsidy that we've received since we've gotten, gone into the GIC. We earmark that basically for OPEBs. So in terms of some history on health insurance, you've seen this a million times, but each time you see it, I think it's pretty dramatic. You see the very rapid rise here in this period, basically tripled, almost tripled over that period of time. We entered the GIC here, saw an outright reduction, and then we've seen a slightly smaller growth curve going forward. That's been the other benefit of joining the GIC. Not only was there the immediate reduction, but the annual growth is far less than what we had been realizing prior to that. Health insurance efforts. So while that last slide showed a pretty ugly picture of growth, it would have been worse if we didn't, if the town didn't take the steps that we're taking. In '05, we consolidated plans, saved over $1 million. '08, plan design changes were implemented, saved another $1 million. The move to GIC was a $5.6 million savings. So what this graph attempts to show is, we went back and looked at our fiscal '10 forecast, and you see a trend line like this. And then, the light of shade here shows what the actual appropriations have been. So if we did nothing different since entering the, since fiscal '10, you know, we'd be up here in this ballpark instead of down here at about $26 million. So the massive undertaking by everybody involved was clearly well, well worth it. And that also goes to employees. We show this every year. The doc shows what the premium costs were for an employee in fiscal '10. So on an individual plan, it was about $2,000. On a, for a family plan, PPO, about $5,500. Current fiscal '14 rates, 1389 for individual and 3388 for a family. To be fair, though, we need to back out, as we know here, they do not include out-of-pocket costs. And those, on average, are about $500 for an individual plan and about $1,500 for an individual. But if you do the math, there's still close to $200 savings, outright reduction for an individual plan and about $600 for a family plan. So over a four-year period from '10 to '14, when health insurance has risen, the amount as an employee that I'm paying has gone down. So it's helped the town budget and it's helped, speaking for myself as an employee, I know it's helped my paycheck. OPEBs, again, something this town should be very proud of, starting with the work of the OPEB task force. We continue to follow that plan. We'll have an appropriation of $3.3 million. The decrease shown here is really, again, because of the one-time infusion of free cash that we're not recommending in '15 because most of that money's needed for capital. So in terms of the long-term plan, this, this shows our funding plan through 2030, which is when the pension system would be fully funded, and that money would then be redirected to here. So what you see is, say, between '18 and '20, 2018, 2020, we'll reach IROC, which is a pretty good story. There's actually some info today, and other than, I think it's Wellesley, Needham, and Wayland are the only communities that have something above like 1% of their IROC being funded and where, you know, where over, I think, over 50% of our IROC being funded. So again, it's something everybody who's been involved should be pretty proud of. Still a long ways to go, but making some steady progress. Pension funding, full funding date of 2030. As I mentioned, there'll be a new schedule that will impact fiscal '16. So a year from now, we'll be talking about that and an increase of 500. But again, that's kind of deflated. The real growth is just $100 million, and that's because of the one-time infusion we put in fiscal '14 that's not being repeated in '15. This is something we put together for the override study committee, and to me, it's interesting and pretty concerning. So what we did here was we looked at the annual 2.5 growth in our property tax levy, which is down here. So you see that that, I'm sorry, if you, if you add these two up, you'll see the total increase. So for example, in '15, the 2.5 levy increase is $3.6 million. If you go down here in fiscal '30, it would be $5.2 million. So of that, so that's our largest revenue source. It's capped by state law by 2.5%. If you look at how much health insurance and pensions alone take up of that 2.5 growth, you know, it's pretty significant. It doesn't include OPEBs. And I put in here, you know, is this 5% annual growth realistic? No, I don't know. So if you look over time, right now, about 60% of new revenue from property tax levy goes toward those two items. You see how that drops down pretty quickly. So by 2030, which is when we fully fund our pension, pension system, 95% of all of the new 2.5 growth in property taxes is basically going to two line items in the town budget. So to me, this speaks pretty clearly of, while there's been reform over the last few years at the state level, the continued need to do something, or these two items will continue to absorb all new municipal revenue. Utilities, again, I think I say every year, say every year, not the sexiest part of a budget, but it's something that is important and it's growing and it's now a pretty significant part of our budget. Good news this fiscal year is we're actually projecting a decrease. A couple of years ago, the Board approved a contract for natural gas that realizes a 20% reduction in cost. And that kicks in in October of '14. So we get about, what's that, eight months of that benefit in fiscal '15. So we're planning right now on about $150,000. Well, it's about $200,000 reduction in natural gas alone, and then there'll be some increases in some other items. But overall, we expect to see a decrease in this item, in this category, which, as you see, has doubled over the last 15 years or so. And then, back to enrollment for a second. We know that as school buildings are added on to, that the utility budget will continue to grow because obviously you get more space to light, heat, and cool. Debt service, we'll talk about that next. Non-appropriated, sort of $8 million part of the budget that nobody really has much say over. Biggest item here is the MBTA assessment, and we expect that to grow 2.5%. And then the overlay, which is under the control of the Board of Assessors, we'll continue the budget about 1.7 for that in fiscal '15. Oh, and the county tax is just under $800,000.
Don't forget to mention that.
Yep. Okay. So now, kind of pull back to the first couple of slides in the presentation. So Steve and I just gave you a whole bunch of information about the revenue side and expenditure side. So what does all, all mean for fiscal '15? So after you run numbers through the town-school partnership agreement, prior to enrollment growth, so again, live in a world of no enrollment growth for a second, and what you have is direct, looking at the school side of the budget, direct growth of 3.2 million, which is steps, inflation, collective bargaining, and special education. Just point out, this doesn't say 500 because this is the school share. The town absorbs 187,000 of that through the town-school partnership agreement. So 3.2 of direct. Indirect, which is primarily benefits and CIP, is 1.4. So you have expenditure growth before enrollment of 4.6. Town-school split gives the schools 3.8 million in revenue for a deficit of $745,000. On the town side, our direct, it's very different. Our direct growth is $1.5 million. Step increases, inflation, assumption for collective bargaining, and then those additional elections I talked about. Indirect, a million six of benefits, our share of the CIP, which is shared 50/50. And then you see here, our share of special education. So $3.4 million of growth, revenue of 3.7. So we actually have a surplus of about $300,000 prior to enrollment growth. So what does it, what does all this stuff mean for fiscal '15? So we put together a couple of possible scenarios, and this is kind of like the walkaway slide. If there's one of these that you want to keep and remember, I would, I would suggest it being this one. So we just talked $745,000 deficit before enrollment. Million dollar increase in base enrollment costs, 50% of which is picked up by the town and the, through the town-school partnership. So add half a million to their, to the 745, and you get a $1.25 million issue. That's kind of where we'd be stopping, I think, right now. But because of the dynamic, the dynamics of the override study committee, there's a couple of other items that have been put on the table. The first is a concept of catching up in some items that the schools laid out a month or so ago to the override study committee, which again is around specialists, nursing, nurses, guidance counselors, central admin, technology staff, those types of things. 3.2 million. So if you add those two together, 1, 2, 5, and 3, 2 is $4.5 million. Then the schools last week presented a strategic IT plan that first-year costs on an operating basis, there's a capital component to it which is separate from this, of $1.3 million. You add those two together, $5.75 million. So again, if these two items weren't, hadn't been raised, we'd be talking to you about a $1.25 million deficit in the school side. These two items have been raised, and I'm sure Selectman Banker would speak to what the override study committee is, how they're going to review these items. But they're obviously pretty substantial. They were just presented a week or so ago. So that's what '15 looks like. Unfortunately, unlike every year in the past, we don't have a slide that says, well, if group health is this and collective bargaining is this, here's your deficit. So, you know, here's something in between. We're basically saying that in this point in time, the town budget has a small deficit which will, you know, which we'll deal with. And the schools have a minimum shortfall based upon the assumptions that we all have of about $1,205. A lot more things will go, will, will change as we go forward. Health insurance numbers, state aid numbers. See if after the six months, if the schools are still projecting a surplus in the current fiscal year budget. So I think a number of things might change between now and February. But this is what we've got for you tonight. And then, just to close with, since this is a long-term projection, we always like to show the, the structural issue in the town and school budget, which is, you have a revenue base that's, you know, the expenditure base that's growing about 1% greater, slightly less than that, on an annual basis. So what you see over a period of time is 18.5% growth in expenditures versus 16.5% growth in revenue to support that. So that's that structural gap that we talk about on an annual basis. So that's it for the presentation. Steve and I and Mel are certainly available for questions.
Well, perhaps because you have referred to the override study committee having a kind of wildcard role in some of this, maybe Selectman Banker would like to give us some updates on the direction of the override study committee with regard to some of these projections.
The, well, as Sean indicated, the override study committee received the catch-up items proposed by the school committee last month, I think on November 13th. And that, those items have been assigned to a subcommittee of the override study committee that specializes, or that its area is school programs. The subcommittee, that subcommittee also has the school technology request, which was actually given to us last week on December 3rd. And the subcommittee members, there was a meeting held a few days ago. A number of questions were raised about these items, certainly about the technology, about the plans, the numbers, about benchmarking versus other communities, about where the schools were prior to growth, about what outcomes or impacts are expected from this, and also whether there are other savings and revenues that can be realized once the package has been opened up and we're moving from the, essentially what has been a, essentially a status quo budgeting and just going forward, which would be the 1.25 million. So there are a lot of questions that have been raised about these issues. And obviously, they are significantly larger than the number that one would have without these catch-up items and technology items.
I'd like to ask a question. I don't know, I'll direct it to Mel, and you can punt, punt it wherever you want to punt it. And I don't know if, if- And I don't know if, if there's an answer for this yet. But what would the world look like if there wasn't an override? What's our capacity to absorb some of this, or all of this, or none of it in the short Longer run, obviously, probably can't address too much, but...
Well, I think I would answer that question in a couple, in a different way, depending on circumstances. If you're talking about that the decision would be made that the town would not pursue an override whatsoever, or we did and it failed, and it didn't appear that there was any willingness to do that, clearly you'd have to balance this budget. I think your, you know, enrollment, support, catch-up, and technology to some extent, we wouldn't be able to consider at all. And then how would we then close that one point two five million dollar gap? I think, you know, I'm guessing that we would try to do that in a combination of some non-tax revenue, but also reductions in expenditures. And now, this is, as Sean mentioned, this, the way the formula works and the way that's, that things are impacting the town, these would be felt primarily in the school department. Now, I'm not naive enough to realize that in Brookline, if there, if the school department is unable to meet its, its needs and the educational programs that it provides, that there's going to be pain all throughout the system, including on the municipal side. So we'd have to look very hard, obviously, at some of the priorities that we have. Now, if the question is, you know, we just don't know, there's the override study committee working on a number of these things, and we're going to defer the override until next year, then I think there are ways to bridge that, that year in decisions that we might not normally make on a permanent basis. But if it's truly just to get to next year, I think there are ways to do that, whether it be the, looking at some non-tax revenue. I think, you know, you've heard some of the assumptions, we'd have to look at those assumptions a lot more aggressively, whether they're collective bargaining, or health insurance, or, or some of the reserve decisions we've made. So I guess I would answer it in that way. But clearly, we don't have the luxury of producing an unbalanced budget. We have to balance our budget, and we will do that. And I think in this case...
You mean we can't print money?
Well, the federal government does, but we, we're not allowed to do that.
Unless there's TARP somewhere floating around for municipalities. Selectman Daley.
Yeah, well, this is my question, I think, is for Selectman Banker. And I know your, your override study committee members have been working very hard, but I think the deadline for your final report is the beginning of March. But I'm expecting some information, some preliminary stuff prior to that, I think, as we go through this budgeting process. Is there going to be an interim report, or some indication of where things are going in terms of a potential override?
Actually, the deadline for the final report is not the first of March. The deadline, the March first was the date for recommendations with regard to the fiscal year fifteen operating budget.
Well, that actually is what Selectman Daley's asking you about, an override for operating budget fifteen.
Right, but that would not, that is certainly not going to be the final report of the override study.
I don't think the final, I don't want to keep interrupting you, but I really would like you to answer Selectman Daley's question.
Chairman DeWitt, Selectman Daley said the final report is March first. The final report is not March first. March first is the date for the fiscal year fifteen operating budget. And the override study committee has talked, essentially at our last meeting, we queried the subcommittee members, and they had indicated that a number of them expected to have information coming back by the middle of January. So the answer is yes, certainly some of that information will be coming back by the middle of January. You know, I think, having received something like the school technology request a week ago, I'm not, I'm not going to project where that will be, nor will I project where the catch-up will be that was essentially put on the table a month ago.
I'd like to follow up at least to say that it seems to me we are, if I'm hearing accurately what you're saying, we will not have guidance about the question of an operating override until very, very late in what I'm going to call the budget cycle. Is that accurate?
No, I think, I think there will certainly be, you know, we have subcommittees who are working on revenue options. We have subcommittees who are working on fiscal policies. We have subcommittees who are working on the school programs and on special education and population. We have subcommittees, a subcommittee working on municipal issues, personnel benefits. I expect that there will be recommendations with regard to certainly some of these issues during the budget process. But, you know, as, as Mr. Kleckner has indicated, the fiscal year fifteen budget, you know, the operating budget for fiscal year fifteen may be one issue, and the longer-term budget's another issue. And I think, you know, I think necessarily, to answer your question, I think the long-term capital budgets are not something that are likely to be resolved. And this is my, my feeling, you know, insofar as we're looking, you know, we're, we know now that we're not even going to have cost figures for capital items until sometime well into calendar year fourteen, even for the first item, which is the devotion school. Correct?
Yeah, well, putting aside, though, the capital for a minute, in terms of the operating budget, I mean, you know, I suppose we can consider if we have to, an override without much guidance from your committee, but that seems crazy to me.
Right.
And I hope that we will be able to get some, some useful, useful guidance from you.
Well, as, as do I. You know, we, the subcommittees are working very hard. They are asking questions. They're trying to gather information. And I would hope that any recommendation that the committee makes would be an informed recommendation.
Okay, do you have a tentative date for your public hearing?
We do not have a date set yet. I suspect it'll be in February, early in February, probably in the first week of February. That's what my co-chair, Susan Ditko, and I have discussed.
Then I'm going to repeat again what's troubling to me, and that is, it sounds as though if there is, if, if the override study committee is able to make recommendations about fiscal fifteen, that could not occur before the financial plan and budget is published in February.
Well, we have been working to the March first date. That was the charge of this board.
I know, I understand, and I guess we are having some new information in which I am sort of sitting here thunderstruck, thinking if there is a compelling reason for a fiscal fifteen operating override, March first is too late.
Well, I, I think, I think that the override study committee is going to be looking at the question of whether there is a compelling reason for a fiscal fifteen override. And the, you know, frankly, one question is, if, and it's going to be a tactical question that this board will have to decide, and that is, are we going to do an override, you know, let's assume that a small override is required for fiscal fifteen. Would we do that and not be able to tell the voters what would be coming down the road in terms of capital or other operating overrides? Or would we be looking to inform the voters as to what they should expect and presenting that to them?
Well, I, I think we would all say that, that doing something for one year when we know that more is necessary would be inadvisable.
Right.
So that, that is why we are saying we're, we're, we're looking for your committee, you know, to get us some guidance as, as quickly as they can.
Right. And I will say that the committee has been working very hard. This is a committee of volunteers. They are meeting regularly. They are trying to get information. And I, you know, I, I guess, my, my response is that they are doing exactly what we've asked them to do, in terms of trying to come to a responsible decision.
Well, I, I guess, I think that maybe our guidance to Mr. Kleckner then, and Mr. Cronin, in terms of putting this budget book together, will have to be to kind of do a two-scenario thing here. And I don't, I, the, the problem is a little bit, the with-override scenario is a little hard to, you know, to ballpark if there's, you know, no information. So if there could be, before they go to press with this budget, or I guess it has to be a few weeks before, you know, if there could be some kind of preliminary information that they could use to put a scenario in the budget book, I mean, you know, it seems crazy to me to publish a budget book that's kind of totally useless if, if we then make big decisions about an override a few weeks later.
Right.
So I, I think that if we can get some kind of, you know, maybe by, I don't know, Mr. Kleckner, what, when you'd have to have some kind of ballpark, sense of the committee, ballpark figures to, to usefully put something in the budget book, but...
But we, there is precedent for budgeting in uncertain times where there have been, mainly I think on this, there's been uncertainty in the state budget, where big cuts were anticipated and different scenarios were put forth, and the budget was revised significantly during the review process. You know, that, that has happened, you know, it's not, it's not unprecedented. It's messier, you know, but it's not optimal, but, you know, we've done it.
Has the school committee's budget, subcommittee come to, I mean, I don't know what the source of these numbers is.
The, the numbers have come from representatives of the school committee.
So we don't...
Peter, well, or the school department.
Okay, so the school committee hasn't actually done its own budget projections?
I think that's what you're saying. You know, just way in on a couple of points, you know, to what Neil just said, in, for the oh-nine, right, oh-nine budget, we actually had a number of cuts laid out, and we said, if the override isn't successful, this is what's going to happen. The override was ultimately successful, so that, if you go back and read that budget book, none of those cuts really happened. You know, Mel mentioned options about, you know, another year, bridging in another year. So I think over the next few weeks, we'll be able to figure out exactly the approach we're going to take, because we do have to go to print at the end of January, so, you know, we have about six weeks.
Well, that, I guess, it's, it's those deadlines that I'm becoming very aware of.
Well, the, I will say that the school subcommittee has asked the school department for what their Plan B would be. I mean, I think this is responsive to your question, what their Plan B would be, and there has not been a response to that to this point. So, you know, the, the budget that you've seen built here is a budget without this three point two million of catch-up and the one point three million of technology operating. And the question would be, if we put those aside for the time being, given the magnitude of those, can we address the one point two five million deficit? How is that measured? Can we address that? Are there non-tax revenues or other ways to bridge that gap? And that, I think that will be the initial look that the town administrator and deputy town administrator will have to, have to look at.
Yep, we will do that. We obviously attend all the, one of our staff members is always at a subcommittee meeting. We're always at the full committee meeting, so we're monitoring it, and we're going to try to also convene with the chairs of the committee to get a little better sense of some of the timing on this. But I think it's very unlikely that you'll see a budget presented by February fifteenth that has all of the options laid out and all of the various responses to those options. I think that's very unrealistic to expect.
Now, remember too, that, you know, the committee is working towards the date that we gave them.
Oh, I do understand that, and I think at the time, we hadn't anticipated the magnitude of these items, so...
No, and, and, you know, frankly, nobody did. And the...
Nobody at this table.
Well, yeah, nobody at this table, anticipated the last two items.
I guess, you know, just to be clear, what I'm remembering is the lead-up to 2008, where there were numbers for possible overrides available by early January, which is what we framed our planning around. And so I guess the part that's troubling to me is that even with the March first deadline, it wouldn't have been available.
Okay, and, and obviously, January first or any time like that is utterly unrealistic when...
No, I hear that. I definitely hear that.
When, you know, when, when the committee has had these numbers dumped on them within the last few weeks.
No, but I hope you will convey to the rest of your committee that, a little bit of a sense of urgency here. Okay.
Look, it, it has been conveyed. At our last full committee meeting, we explicitly asked for dates, for response dates from subcommittees. Some of the questions are a lot easier than others. And I, you know, there, there are ways that one could raise revenues to cover these gaps very quickly, but they may not be desirable to people, so...
Okay. Selectman Goldstein.
Changing track somewhat. Probably a question for Mr. Cirillo. I want to ask about the unreserved fund balance that we spoke about earlier. So Moody's is looking, looks for ten percent.
Above ten percent.
Above ten percent. How close can we get to ten percent is the question, given that, you know, unreserved fund balance, to me, and I'm an amateur at this, but it just seems duplicative of reserves and stabilization funds and other emergency funds that we have.
Well, two, two points on that. First of all, you can't, you can't manage to a number, because the numbers that are being generated throughout the fiscal year and what we base the undesignated fund balance on, we don't know until the fiscal year end what the ultimate numbers are. And so we have to place a number in, from the previous year's free cash, to make sure that we're above the ten percent level. Second of all, these bits of money would not... Second of all, these bits of money would not go for the operating budget. They would be one-time monies and just by virtue of being one-time monies, they would be for one-time purposes for expenditure, if they were being expended. So, if, if we could shave the number to 10, which I, I hesitate to do only because I don't think that anybody in the Commonwealth has the, or in the country has the expertise to figure out what the appropriate number is for undesignated fund balance as the numbers are churning throughout the year. Even if you did that, it wouldn't solve the 1.25 million issue.
What, what could we apply those funds to?
Capital?
Capital.
Reserves?
Think of it as money that otherwise might have been free cash.
It, it would have been free cash if we, it was free cash.
Yeah, it used to be free cash, except for Moody's.
And we've decided not to spend.
I, I do call this the Moody's Fund, but it'd be a little clearer because we have lots of funds. And what has been troubling to me is that apparently Moody's does not consider our other reserves to be unrestricted. And the only way we could satisfy them was to create a separate cash unrestricted fund.
There are a whole...
We have lots of reserve funds.
Right.
And the, the numbers in those reserve funds hugely exceeds this number.
Yeah, but the ones that count is the stabilization fund, fund and the undesignated fund balance. Those are the two that make up the 10%. The rest of them do not qualify.
The stabilization fund does qualify, I think.
It's part of the 10%.
Part of it.
Well, I mean, it's, there's just a lot of money tied up in the, in those, in those projects. If there was, if, in those funds, if there was some way of restructuring our budget to, to make better use of it without jeopardizing our AAA rating, I'd like to see us do it.
We, we haven't found a way yet.
Yeah.
I'm sure the AAA rating is worth it.
No, I, I don't want to jeopardize AAA, but 1% is a lot of money.
Selectman Daley? Yeah, I have a question, Steve, about your estimate of state aid, and it was on page slide 11. It seems kind of optimistic to me.
Well, again, we are a foundation budget. The state should be bringing us up to 17.5%. We do not want to look through rose-colored glasses and believe the state is going to bring us from 15.4 to 17.5 in one year. They have been increasing Chapter 70 over the last two fiscal years. We anticipate, as per their policy, that they will phase us up to the 17.5, which is the foundation requirement, 17.5%.
Okay. But I mean, somewhere in this, you've got like a number of years of increases in a row here, which we did have in the mid-'90s, but very often, there are some dips and things along the way. I mean, we're going to have a change of governors somewhere in there, so was the policy that you're speaking of one from the governor's office or from the legislative?
No, it's a formula. It's, it's in the legislative formula for state aid, Chapter 78.
Okay. So, you think it's likely to survive?
Yeah. Again, it could be 1.1, it could be $900,000. It's, this is an estimate at this point in time.
Right.
But to the dips in state aid, were, were related to external factors such as recession, which, everything I've read, the state revenues are pretty solid right now.
Okay.
It's probably a good assumption.
Right. You could be cautiously optimistic about that. So, do we have other, yes, selectman, bingo?
On slide 28, the annual increase in benefits and pensions, what, there's a 5% annual growth in health insurance. What are you assuming? What portion of that pension and health insurance amount is pensions? And what are the assumptions behind that?
The pension number grows annually per the current schedule by 5.9%, which is about a million, and obviously, that will grow each year. So, a million is pensions in the first couple of years, and the balance is health insurance. And that's just based on the schedule that we have. The, the schedule we have with PERAC goes out to 2030, so we know those are numbers, and they grow 5.9% a year.
But, and as I understand it, that's an actuarial projection, correct? Unlike the health benefit, which is sort of estimate that we have to make based on what we know at the given moment.
Right. And that, that amount gets adjusted every couple of years?
Yes.
So, this, this just basically assumes the current amount?
Correct.
Growing at 5.9?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The next adjustment will be fiscal '16.
Right.
Other questions before we move on to capital? Okay.
A sobering discussion.
Yes, a sobering discussion. I hope the next one is less sobering, but I don't know.
No, it isn't. But while I'm switching over, I do just want to say, I've seen the override study committee probably too much, and they are there at 7:30 in the morning and through mid-morning. They're there at night, back the following morning. I don't think they, they're not doing what they've been asked to do, just as a observer of the...
No, I, I don't, I don't mean to suggest they're not working hard.
And I, I know you're not, but I'm just...
I'm just saying, you can get, you know, you could spend years learning all this stuff, and, and unfortunately, we don't have years.
I guess I'm just giving them a shout-out.
Okay.
All right.
No, I, I do...
Appropriately so.
I do appreciate their hard work.
All right, so capital. This was even more fun. All right. So, it started off every year with just a basic quote about how important capital budgeting is, and I think you can look across the Commonwealth and the country and you'll see places that do it well, and you'll see places that don't do it well, and I mean you literally see it. And that's what's so neat about capital plan, because you can actually see the projects get done. So, this too was another different, challenging year to put it together. And, you know, just a little bit as a backdrop, so you had the B-Space Committee be formed, do their work, and present a set of options that, for the most part, were ultimately adopted by the school committee. So, that then basically gets put on our desk, and what we're tasked with doing is putting together a funding plan that lives within our policies and addresses all the other significant needs throughout the town. And that's what we've done, is this is preliminary. As we said earlier, there's a lot of work to be done by the override study committee on the capital side. There's a lot of time to pass before anybody's ready to go to the voters for money for devotion, if that's what's ultimately determined. So, what we're saying to you tonight is, this is based upon the assumptions and based upon the recommendations before us right now, this is our recommended way of balancing a now $300 million, six-year capital plan. So, it's balanced, follows all of our CIP and free cash policies. It supports that, the expand-in-place approach that was adopted by B-Space and the school committee. And what that really means is three, three projects, one of which had been rolling along, and the other two are new. Devotion is the one that had been moving forward in the CIP, but the difference here is that it's being recommended to be a larger school. So, it's a renovation addition that would add enough to make it a thousand-plus student K-8 elementary school. Driscoll School is new. It was recommended by B-Space, and it adds, I think it's a net of 12 classrooms. I think it's physically nine, but a net of 12 classrooms. And then, all the projections show that soon enough, you're going to have all these kids out of elementary school and into the high school, and that facility doesn't have enough space to fit that level of enrollment. So, we had to account for that as well. So, we did it by three things. Recommending a debt exclusion override for devotion, and then that frees up that capacity, which I'll get into a little bit later, to pay for the Driscoll and the high school projects. Uses a million-dollar overlay surplus, which Steve talked about in the revenue side, to fund the first piece of the Driscoll project, which is feasibility and schematic design. And we're assuming 35% funding for each of those three projects, all right? Some other headlines, as I just mentioned, the override study committee is going through these.
Can I just ask a quick question there?
Yep.
So, we got closer to 40% on Runkel. Has MSBA policy changed?
Uh, yes, it has.
Okay.
And we actually didn't get closer to 40. On paper, it was stated as about 40, but when you do the math, after they said no to a bunch of change orders and said no to this and said no to that and said no to that, it ended up being, you know, in the ballpark of 35, 6, 7%, something like that for those projects.
Yeah, but they're, they're still going to do that with devotion, so...
But the key difference is, and I learned of it over the summer, listening to B-Space's work through, well, HMFH, MSBA has a $275 per square foot cap on hard costs, all right? Anything above that is on the town's dime. So, what we asked HMFH to do was update their devotion concept study, basically the, the spreadsheet of the cost estimates for that, because I needed to know, we were assuming 40%, what does that math really turn into if they're capping at 275? And based on what they gave me, it ends up being a 65-35 split, all right? But new information through the work of the capital subcommittee, the override study committee, looking at some of the, or listening to HMFH last Thursday morning, they had a couple of hour presentation, and they stated that the market rate, so to speak, was 350 to 390 per square feet. So, what, what I actually did today with a member of the capital subcommittee was, you know, plug in those figures and what would that then spit out? And it's closer to like 70-30, all right? So, it's, yeah, it's going kind of the wrong direction.
Was that, did we got, I know we went out to bid at a very favorable time on Runkel, so did they have that 275 rule in place and we were able to be closer to meeting it?
Yes.
Because of the bid climate at the time?
Yes. And, and what we, and I'm going to point it out, for the MMA, I think, want to start doing is start pushing the, the MSBA a little bit to revise that, because if you talk to the project managers in the room, or was in the room, who do this for a living, you know, they'll tell you that 275 a square foot might be a real number in Western Mass on an open space, but in a, you know, suburban, urban environment in greater Boston area, it's not $275 per square foot. So, I think there needs to be some discussions with the MSBA about changing that.
The, the actual bidding environment since the time of the original report, I think it was done at about 354 a square foot, and now, according to the last HMFH presentation, I think they indicated they're coming in at 390 to 400 a square foot.
Yep.
Ouch. My gosh.
So, and, and that actually, you know, I'll get to that later, but, so, override study committee is doing their work. Lot more discussion around debt exclusion or not debt exclusion for devotion. There's two sides to that, which I understand both. Within the $300 million of the CIP, about 30% is being funded from outside sources, so that speaks to the towns looking to outside funding for a number of projects. And then, even with all the pressures caused by enrollment growth, you know, we continue to invest in the parks, the playgrounds, our streets, our sidewalks. We invest in technology, new fire apparatus, repair renovations to fire stations. So, you know, we continue to address all of the needs. The major projects, I, I won't run through all of these, just highlight a, a couple because they're actually getting close to being a reality. The Village Square project, which, you know, we've been talking about, I think, for about five or six years, and it's getting pretty close, all outside funding. Lays Anderson, something I worked with Aaron on in getting these projects, you know, they, admittedly, they're far out, but this was part of the original master plan that was put together years ago to start getting them into the mix. Newton Street landfill, we've been talking about that for a number of years, and here it is, it's ready for appropriation. Fire fleet maintenance and training facility, this is brand-new on paper, but it's something that internally, we've been looking at for probably seven or eight years. It was looked at a few years ago. The numbers were extremely high because the concept at the time was different. New fire chief, he's taken a look at it. This is one of his top priorities. Basically, we've got fleet maintenance employees working behind Station 1 on the street or having to take a truck to another station to work on it. It's just shouldn't, you know, shouldn't be that way. And you also know how much emphasis Chief Ford has on training. His goal would be to incorporate a renovation of the training yard behind Station 6 while at the same time doing this. So, this is a brand-new thing, and the feasibility money would be in the first year of fiscal '15, so there'd certainly be some discussion about this go-around, but the funding for the actual project would be a couple of years out. So, I highlight that because that's new. Classroom capacity, we've done this the last couple of years, and this is money basically for Charlie to work with the schools and, to the extent possible, carve out some more classrooms. It's also necessary to pay for the remaining lease payments on the soon-to-be-installed, I believe, modules at the Lawrence School. And half a million of it is in fiscal '16, and that is to provide Charlie with some funding to start preparing the high school, to do some necessary work around class reconfig, classroom reconfigurations there. Ed tech, we just talked about that in the operating side. What we've done on the school side, I mean, on the CIP side, and I know Peter's here to speak to it if necessary, is we, we basically put in the backbone, so to speak, of that through capital investment. The first year, I think, is $400,000, and then each year thereafter is $200,000 or $250,000 a year. And then, the last thing, I highlighted again because it's new, is the golf course. There are some, the, the last bond was approved, I think, a decade ago, and we've chipped away at that over the last decade. We're basically coming to the end of that, and Lisa and the golf pro have some plans and the superintendent up there have some plans to further renovations there. And what I've done from a financial perspective is make sure that the debt service figure is basically a, a constant in terms of percent of revenue, because we don't want that, because it's a relatively small enterprise fund, to be overburdened with debt, because that would just cause problems with the overall funding of that operation. So, that's $1 million. It would be spread over a few years, and all the debt services paid out of that enterprise fund, no general fund support. Continued major investment, streets, sidewalks, water and sewer systems, IT, trees, fire apparatus, general building, you know, fenestration, masonry work, all those types of things, all built in to the CIP. So, our annual refresher on how the CIP funding policy works, it's the so-called 7.5% policy, two pieces, 6%, which is comprised of debt and tax. Our goal is 4.5 debt, 1.5 cash, and then free cash to, in amount equal to 1.5% of revenue to get us to 7.5%. There's a 7.5% policy. In terms of the 15 numbers, revenue financed is 9.5 million, and if you see over here, this piece is your revenue financed total of the 7.5%. 4.3 million comes from your 6% policy, and then 4.1 million comes from free cash. Over to the right, you have some outside, some external funds, $100,000 from cemetery trusts, and $1 million from the overlay surplus. On the debt side, the general fund, non-debt exclusion, that's the component of the 6% policy, that's the debt component of it. Then we have debt exclusion, which we're still paying off, that's the high school. And then, enterprise funds, which are fully self-supporting, they pay for their own debt service. So, in total, $11.9 million of debt, 8.5 is funded from ongoing revenues, 1.1 is funded through dedicated additional property taxes, and 2.3 is funded through enterprise funds.
And Lincoln's paid off?
Yeah, Lincoln last payment was 13, I think. And then, free cash, Steve just went through the same exact slide with you, so I'm not going to go through it. What I do want to highlight, though, is if you take, so here's the free, here's the amount of money that's required to get the free, to get the CIP up from 6% to 7.5%. So, you need $3 million of free cash to get there. And then, we're basically suggesting that all of the remaining free cash after these first five priorities are met, earmark that to the CIP. Last year, A, we had a higher free cash certification, and B, we were able to put that difference into pensions, OPEB's, unemployment, workers' comp. There's so much pressure on the CIP right now that we need that to balance the CIP. So, in terms of a funding summary, I know that, you know, how this all pulls together is sometimes difficult to comprehend or explain of both. So, this is an attempt to try and show you over each year of the, of the six years, how we get to our 7.5% policy, which is right down here. You'll see in the first year, we're at 8.4%, and that's because of two things. One, the additional free cash reported CIP that I just spoke about, and two, the overlay surplus. What I want to highlight also, though, is if you look at this bottom line, you'll see 7.5, 7.5, well, actually, 7.9, 8, 9, 7, 9, 6. The reason why these grow... six. The reason why these grow is because of the debt exclusion being recommended for the devotion school. And the reason why it steps up is we would ban it for a small amount in the first year, ban it short-term, bond anticipation notes, in the second year, and then ban for the full amount in the third year, and then permanently finance it in the fourth year, which is what you see here. Um, so, um, you can see, we live within our six percent policy, um, to a certain extent, then we need the debt exclusion in order to fund, uh, the devotion school. So in its totality, we're really funding about ten percent of revenue, um, for our capital plan. Outside revenue sources are important. Um, as you see, about twenty-eight percent of the CIP comes from outside state and federal grants, primarily, um, MSBA and Chapter Ninety funding. Uh, we do have, uh, funds from the Two Brookline Place project for the Village Square project. Uh, we utilize in CDVG funds, we've worked with planning department, um, have six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, um, estimated for the Village Square project, and then another two-hundred for the, uh, Riverway Park project, uh, pedestrian bike path project. And then cemetery funds, we continue to work with, uh, DPW and the cemetery trustees to build a long-term plan, uh, both operating in capital, uh, for cemetery funds. So financing summary, what I just wanna highlight here is that, um, more than half of the budget, or half of the CIP funding is coming from debt, and it's these two pieces right here. The piece that's within the six-and-a-half percent, and then the debt exclusion. So if you add those two together, it's over fifty percent. So fifty percent of our CIP is being funded by general obligation debt. Twenty-eight percent is funded from, uh, basically outside sources, and then the third piece is our pay-as-you-go component, which is property tax and free cash, so about sixteen percent is done on a pay-as-you-go basis. Category summary, no surprise, since we're talking about school facilities, uh, more than seventy-five percent of the, of the budget of the CIP is going toward facilities, with the remaining going to infrastructure and, uh, parks and open space. So this one, I do wanna spend a minute on. So this is our, our debt management plan, and this is, as I explained to the override study committee in B-Space, this is really the core of the CIP, it's what drives how much money you have for other pay-as-you-go projects. Um, if you have too much debt, you can't do smaller pay-as-you-go projects, so the debt management plan is something Steve and I work on closely, and, uh, we update periodically. So, you know, it shows here for everybody to see the project, the bond amount, I mean, the, the total project amount, the bond amount if we're phasing it in, and the term, meaning how many years we're gonna pay off the, the debt. Um, and then you'll see the principal and interest payments over here each year. And this box here, I highlighted the Driscoll School. So new project, would have twenty-year term, would actually phase this in two pieces, um, and you see the first year impact would be about a million dollars, um, and then the second phase would be another million seven. So once it's fully implemented, about two-point-seven million dollars of debt service going to, um, our share of the Driscoll School project. Then the high school, the first thing we'd do is ban five million dollars, then would ban thirty-eight million dollars, then would ban all of it for one year, then we would permanently finance it. So once it, it fully kicks in, it's four-point-four million dollars of debt service. And I should speak to why we'd do a ban, and a ban, and a ban. One of the things that, um, I looked at was, instead of looking at this as just a six-year CIP, really try to look at it as like a ten-year CIP is, um, you know, it's kind of difficult to do that, but, you know, worked with primarily Aaron and Charlie and put in long, long-term needs, uh, continued to inflate streets and sidewalks and those types of annual items. And what you saw was, uh, debt service picture goes like this, it's pretty steady, and then there's a pretty significant drop-off in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. So while that timing isn't perfect for the high school, if you ban the high school, you'd be able to match up when that debt runs off. So.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but for those people who are watching outside, it sounds like we're doing something weird, banning high schools.
No.
Bond anticipation notes.
Bond anticipation notes, yep.
Short-term debt.
Yep, they're really used for cash flow purposes, um, and that's what we'd be doing here, but it also helps us in the way that our CIP.
So we would have a couple of years of short-term debt before, uh, converting it to permanent debt.
Yep. So.
Let me just ask, though, you know, the, uh, interest rates have been historically at low.
Yep.
Levels. So in, in some sense, it worries me a little bit to consider putting off the permanent financing when you're likely to be at significantly higher levels.
Well, I think you're gonna be at significantly higher levels in this timeframe anyway. Um, you know, we're talking way out here.
We're talking twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, so just to, just to step back and, you know, go back to what I said originally, debt exclusion for devotion is one vote for three projects, that that's the way we're kind of looking at it now in the CIP. You exclude that, it frees up fifty-four million dollars. You then look at Driscoll, we estimate that to be about a forty-some-odd million-dollar project, twenty-seven million of which is town share, that leaves you twenty-seven million, okay? That's not enough to, um, fund a renovation at the high school, but that coupled with that debt runoff I just explained, gets you to a point where you can afford about a seventy-five million dollar total project, of which the town share would be, uh, thirty-five percent. Now, again, that assumes MSBA support for all three projects, and assumes those cost estimates are accurate, and it assumes, um, uh, what's the third assumption? I'll stop at those two, because those are two big enough assumptions.
Well, that's fine, and I, I would just like to say, again, I, people may be watching this and can't follow all of the financial jargon, but, uh, what we're talking about here is a strategy that would, in order to provide the classrooms that have been, the needed, the needed classrooms that have been projected, would be that we would go to the voters asking for an override in order to raise revenues to cover the debt cost for the devotion project. And then, were we successful with that, these other capital, uh, major capital projects, the Driscoll School and the high school, could be afforded under our regular appropriations for debt service?
Mm-hmm. Assuming that, uh, the state would cooperate.
Yeah, assuming we'd still get MSBA. But, but this, the, the thinking here is that in order to, uh, to, um, release the capacity for future projects, it would be important to get the devotion project approved in an override for a debt exclusion. That, that's what's embodied in this projection.
Yes. Again, with a caveat that more work is going to be done.
Right. And we don't really know yet for sure what the real costs of these projects are, but I think it's fair to say that if we've got some current per-square-foot construction costs, the, uh, factor that you multiply there is still gonna be pretty close to real numbers, regardless of what the building is in the end.
And I, and I'll admit, the seventy-five million dollar number for the high school was backed into. What I did was I said, okay, what could the CIP afford and still maintain the normal pay-as-you-go component? So the seventy-five million dollar number didn't come from a project manager or from an architect, it came from me. Um, and I don't know if you want that. So it's my way of saying, that's what the CIP could afford if these assumptions were to hold true.
And I think the school committee is in the process of authorizing.
Yes.
Some financial, some, um, what am I trying to say? The feasibility for the high school.
Yep. So I was just talking about debt, so this is what I was talking about.
Can we just go, go back to that slide for a second?
Sure.
I just wanna point out, actually, this slide doesn't have the number, but there had been a number floating around on Driscoll that I've heard that the town had a placeholder of thirty million.
Forty-two.
So the placeholder right now is forty-two million, I just wanted to point that out.
Thirty-five percent state, so our share is twenty-seven.
Right.
Yep, and that's what these debt service numbers, uh, if you add these two together, twenty-seven-point-three million. So.
Okay.
Here's our debt picture, so this is what I was talking about. So here's our existing debt, and you, and I purposely ran this out longer than I normally would, so you can see the drop-off. So, you know, pretty steady, and then you get this significant drop-off right here, and then it drops off again. So what you're able to do is backfill it with, um, new debt here, and then on top is the debt, is the, uh, debt exclusion, uh, proposed debt exclusion for, uh, the devotion school. Um, but it's really, you know, what's really important here to me is this significant drop-off, it's that flexibility, and that's actually why we use, um, level principle as opposed to level debt service, which is something the override study committee's looking at, uh, 'cause what it does is it provides you ongoing flexibility in the CIP, because your principal and interest, well, your interest payment's gonna drop on an annual basis, whereas if you have level debt service, the number starts there, it stays that way for twenty years, so you don't get this type of, you don't have a debt, uh, picture like this, you have one that's more flat. Um, but so, you know, this is really important in terms of what allows us to propose what we're proposing. So, uh, as I said at the beginning, six percent policy, we have a goal of four-and-a-half percent debt and one-and-a-half percent cash. So what this does is show you, based upon what's proposed, how close are we? On the left is percentage, on the right is dollar values. So what you see is, this is right where we wanna be, okay? Contrast that with last year's, and this actually was the year before, and the year before, and the year before. We have been consistently talking about fiscal eighteen and fiscal nineteen as being really troublesome because of the pressure the devotion school being a non-debt exclusion project was putting on the CIP. So if you, if you look over here, there was only eight-hundred thousand dollars of, of pay-as-you-go capital in fiscal eighteen. If you go back to what we have now, it's more in the normal three-to-four million dollar range as pay-as-you-go. So there is an added benefit to excluding devotion, um, because it does give you back some of that flexibility in the CIP that you had lost by basically earmarking, um, all of eighteen to fully, um, financing, uh, the devotion school. So for me, this is a much better picture of, um, your split between cash and debt than this one, which we have been looking at for the last couple of years. Uh, just a couple more on debt, and then, uh, certainly open it up to any questions on the projects themselves or this financing plan. Um, debt as a percent of revenue is a very common, uh, measure, um, lot of numbers up here, but just wanna highlight a couple. Right here would be the debt exclusion amount for devotion, if it were ever to, um, come to pass. And then here is the impact of the high school kicking in once it's permanently financed, so you see the jump from sixteen to nineteen million. Um, and then what does that mean in terms of this, of this metric? You see, we've been in the low fours, which is actually a pretty low number, which we need to explain to Moody's every year why it's low. They normally like to see between five and ten, um, but we have such a robust pay-as-you-go component that, that kind of replaces that, so we remind them every year, and they're fine with it. But you see what happens is, and you would think of this anyway, if you're taking on a devotion school project for ninety, well, our share of ninety million, a Driscoll School project and a high school project, our shares, uh, our debt is gonna rise pretty significantly, that's what you see here. Um, it's still, you know, well below a ten percent number that Moody's would look as, look at as to being high. Um, you know, we're back in the five to six percent range, which is where we were if you go back, um, you know, like fiscal eight, nine, ten, uh, that was more of the range. But overall, we're well within, you know, established guidelines by the ratings agencies as to, uh, over-under reliance upon debt. And then this, I think I said every year, you really can't read, um, up on the screen, but we publish it every year so that folks can see that we actually abide by all of the policies that, um, the town, uh, follows every year. Um, you know, these are very standard, um, uh, debt management variables, you know, percent, uh, dollars per capita, uh, amortization rates, um, you know, percent of income, those types of things, and we're well within, um, all of them. Um, the only thing I do wanna highlight, it's, it's not truly a negative, but it's just something to, to recognize, is our, how much debt we ensure within ten years has been consistently in the seventy to eighty percent range. And then you see here, if, if all of these projections held through, it would be more about two-thirds, and that's because we start a twenty-five-year term for devotion, um, and then after that would be at a twenty-five-year term for the high school, I think I got it in there for that. So, you know, no cause for alarm, but to me, of all these variables, that's one that kinda, uh, sticks out. So, you know, as I said at the beginning, um, it, we were handed a recommendation, and this is our, um, answer to that. If nothing changes, and this is, these projects have to go forward, this would be our recommendation to make it all work. Um, and there's a whole host of other projects in here, I'm not giving them, uh, they're due, you know, we, and the department heads here to speak to them if there were questions on it, um, but, you know, obviously, we wanted to focus on a bit on how this all hangs together.
Okay, Selakman Daly.
Yeah, I had a question. Um, I think in your plan, you're assuming that if we were to do a debt exclusion override for, uh, devotion school, that it would not go on this May, but the following May?
Yeah.
And how does that square up with, I know we're, uh, the school department is very anxious to get additional space, and maybe Mr. Rowe can answer this question, does that delay, um, their hopes for when that project would get going, and?
Um, the, the plan as laid out here is consistent with, uh, information that we've been working with, with the architects, starting with the, oh, sorry, starting with the devotion concept study. So this is actually consistent with the plan. If, your, your premise was that we might desire more capacity earlier, the answer is, of course, we would, but in reality is, we won't have it, so we're gonna have to look to the old Lincoln School to do some probable relocating of certain students for temporary periods while this construction's going on.
Okay, so you're saying.
This is consistent with the plan that we've been studying, yes.
You couldn't move forward faster, um, even if that was on this, the ballot this May?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, fine.
It, it can't be on the ballot this May, because the MSBA process precludes that, and we don't have the numbers.
Yeah, yes, in fact, we were, at, at the building commission just earlier this evening, HMFH presented a, a, um, uh, schedule for feasibility and schematics, which really shows that there probably won't have, um, a, a figure, a design in a figure until late winter, early spring of fifteen. And so, so that's what we have to have in order to get a vote, in order to move forward to MSBA. So the reality is, there's a long plan.
Fifteen, fourteen?
Yes.
Are you sure you're saying fifteen?
Fifteen, yes.
Well, we will have trouble getting it on the ballot next May.
Eighteen months to do something they've already studied?
About a year. That, that's correct, yes. They have, they're going to go right back to the, they studied and came up with some concepts, but the, the feasibility and schematics process is scheduled to take, um, at least a year from now before we really.
Well, I know, I'm sure you heard some of our conversation with Selakman Banka earlier about, but if you get us numbers in mid or late spring next year, we would have trouble putting that on the ballot in May.
Um, I can't, that's the schedule.
Okay, all right, all right.
That will then dictate, and then, and then I think what you know is that, based on the, that good information, which will really be based on a design and a choice of what a model is, and a, how it's situated on the, on the, uh, property, et cetera, and others, what approach we're gonna be taking, um, that'll then yield cost estimates, you know, in, in an environment a year from now, um, and we'll then have to have that for both MSBA conversation, for the, for the conversation in the community about whether a debt exclusion's appropriate. So we need to do all that development work before we can really move forward with confidence.
Okay.
You know, um, and let me, let me also point out, if you go back to slide five, um, there's two-point-three million dollars in fiscal year fifteen, and sixteen being carried in this budget for classroom capacity without an override or a debt exclusion, as we've carried it for a number of years.
Is, is that money?
Did you want me to comment on its use?
Sure, what is, what is being done with that?
Um, we're using that for both, um, the, um, installation of the, of the four additional classrooms at Lawrence School, uh, it's paying, which we're doing through a, a lease purchase over.
Five years, right?
Four? Over four years. Um, as well as rental of classroom space in, um, two private locations this, uh, this year, growing to double that space for next year.
Yeah, I thought it was five.
Right. So, in fact, it's being spent, I think it would be.
Well, yeah, so those are the two major.
Missly to suggest that it's just sitting there not being used.
Those are the two major purposes. Additionally, we're working with, with Mr. Simmons, Charlie Simmons, on other modifications that we're, we're performing in other schools. We're looking at, um, changes in the Driscoll School to get additional classrooms, we're doing some modifications, we're doing some additions in the, who was I meeting with today? My schools are merging together. Oh, right, uh, the devotion school, we actually are, um, modifying the science classrooms, um, in an area. The devotion school, we actually are modifying the science classrooms in an area of a wing that allows us to grow one more classroom for next year by taking away a science storage room, taking a wall down, creates an additional classroom. So we're continuing to use these dollars to create exactly what this is classroom capacity in buildings, but we're also using it to rent space and to build space at Lawrence.
And also, also to plan for future.
That's correct. We're using-
There's the, as-
As Reverend Sturger-
Mr. Cronin indicated, there's a half a million dollars in there to start looking at the high school.
That's correct. Oh, yes, as well as additional dollars for where we think we'll need to do similar actions within the existing high school building before we ever get to a project, as well as the planning dollars that you were referring to a little while ago in terms of the next step of looking at the, at the high school sort of program effect of this growth as it begins next year.
Not to mention the old Lincoln School, that we appointed a committee of seven-
Correct, for which there's a $3 million appropriation for work in the building, I think a half a million for the garage work and another, is it a half a million for-
But that's fiscal '14.
No, no, we've already done that.
Yeah, that's already appropriated.
But that's, but that's already, that's addressing capacity issues, what devotion is-
But it's significant resources to, to make sure that we have adequate building, school space.
Slakman-Washinsky?
The ed technology line, does that include any of what was presented last week in the school technology master plan?
Yes, a piece of it was referenced as CIP. And what we've targeted, and Sean Accure, they said this would have 400,015 and 250 for each of the next, I think it was four years. And what we've targeted are some of the equipment, is some of the equipment in the classrooms, primarily the projection systems and the infrastructure to support that, as well as some of the carts that will-
Some networking?
The additional access points, yeah. And some of the carts that would allow us to have mobile, you know, move a group of laptops in the classroom.
This doesn't fully fund the capital component of what was presented.
Correct. No, we listed a plan that grew to about $2.5 million over five years. This was just a piece of that. But this, this would get us started so that we can have some investment in technology to move forward.
Well, then, I-
It's a beginning.
I, I think, which slide is this?
Five. Oh.
That's something else.
Something else.
At the beginning of the presentation, we talked about enrollment growth, and we talked about some additional items that had been presented to the override study committee. And one is a $1.3 million first-year cost for an education tech plan where, whoops, you just took it away. Now I don't see the number there anymore.
But I know the, I know the item you're referring to, yeah.
Okay, so I guess for us, there is a real question as to what is that number compared to the one that just vanished that was there before?
Sure. The 400,000?
Was actually 2 point, whatever it was.
One point seven.
1.7, sorry.
Right.
What is the relationship between the CIP number of 1.7 million and this number of 1.3?
The CIP number, as I just said, is all for infrastructure and hardware to support projection systems in classrooms and movable carts to get computers to classrooms.
Okay.
This is a mix of hardware, including computers for students and staff in terms of replacement and purchase. It's also for software, generally through licenses, but we are looking at different models, and it's for staffing, generally for help desk and other support staff. So it's a, it's a ramping up. This is the first-year cost of a plan that plateaus at $2.5 million in terms of a full rollout.
Okay. Slakman-Daly?
And we can provide you with the full detail. It was actually presented to the, both the school committee, I think it was two weeks ago, and then to the override study committee a week ago, and we're glad to provide you with copies of the plan.
I'm, I'm just wondering if you're going to a system where everyone has their own laptop in school, then do you need overhead protectors? Why don't you have a go-to-meeting thing, and everyone can see on their screen what the teacher has up on her screen, or something like that?
The model will be different at every school and at every grade. So the, what you refer to as the one-to-one, which we sometimes call a bring-your-own, is a model that is, will probably be implemented at the high school. Because if you imagine sending your child off to college, right, what's the first thing you buy? It's a computer, right? Because that, that issue of needing the basic computer is, is, I think, an essential. And in many ways, we think of that at the high school as a, and will move, I think, to a model very much like that. At the K8s, it'll, the model will probably be different, and you, we probably won't utilize a bring-your-own model, but we'll provide, as I said, one of the things we're buying is, are the carts to allow for a mobile cart of 20 computers to come into a classroom so students can use them for a period of time. The, the reason for the, for the projection system is so that the teachers, the teacher can do presentations, or so that the students can then do presentations to the class. But the idea of having a presentation board where everybody in the classroom, in this case, right, can share in a common conversation with, with an example, is, I think, and we think, as part of our plan, something that'll be around for a while. So we don't want to get lost in the question of, is it a smart board, or is it a, you know, those conversations in certain-
We'll buy you some white sheets.
Right. In certain classrooms, a pull-down screen is appropriate, right? And when you think about the high school, and you think about instruction in, in the high school, it's actually very different from how it may operate in a third-grade classroom. And so there are applications for interactive whiteboards, which is what the smart board model is. And then there are applications for the white sheet. And so we agree that there are both, and so as we roll out the plan, we'll have to look at what's the right location for each, and so that's what will evolve.
Can you, just to get, go back for a minute to the whole question of an override, an operating budget override, not the debt exclusion override that we're discussing, are you, are you beginning to formulate a plan as to what would have to be cut if that, that there isn't an operating override this spring?
Yes. We are, one of the things that we have responsibility to do is to, the superintendent has to present a preliminary budget by the middle of February. Actually, I think it's February 13th or 12th, I can't remember which, on the night of the school committee meeting. The superintendent will present his preliminary budget, and one of the targets will be the number that comes through the town-school partnership as we normally do. So we'll have to prepare a budget for that target. We'll also be having, we'll be somewhere in the process of, of working with the override study committee and the community around what are the, what are the issues, either in terms of catch-up or in terms of technology, that we'd like to have beyond that. But in terms of addressing the need to have a balanced budget, yes, our goal will be, our plan, in fact, is to, is to have that as well.
And have you, on the technology stuff, have you prioritized?
Yes. Yes. In fact, in, in all of this, there's the ability to prioritize.
Okay.
Are there questions for Mr. Rowe while we've got him?
No.
No? Okay. Other questions with regard to the capital improvement program in general? Yes, Slakman-Golstein?
I have a question on an item that's not there. I see Mr. Peppa Sturgeon there. I know that we're facing a, maybe a brand-new world come July 1st on sanitation and trash collection. I don't see anything in the CIP mentioned about any, any plans for that yet. I know it's a little early, I know we're not talking about operating budgets, but I wonder if maybe there's a need for something in the CIP.
It's a little bit premature right now to, to make that determination. I think anything that comes down the road with sanitation would be picked up in the operating budget through the Department of Public Works. So I wasn't anticipating putting any, anything in the capital budget.
I know that there's been talk in the past about possibly the need for new equipment, depending on what kind of system we go to, and, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing here yet.
We've pretty much eliminated that possibility of trying to retrofit our existing equipment. We're talking about our collection trucks in any of the potential scenarios. We are looking at many different scenarios for curbside collection on, on solid waste, but I, I don't think that that's really a reasonable option at this point. So I'm not looking at any capital expenditure right now.
Thanks. While we've got you up there, can you talk a little bit about the closure of the second landfill site and what that, what that does for us and what our obligations are to?
Let me bring Director Benjener and Ditto up here. He can enlighten you on that.
As you may recall, we've, we've closed the front landfill, which is now Skyline Park, and we purposely left the rear landfill unclosed in order to accept waste from the residents and the surrounding neighborhood if they wanted to deposit that without any fee. So that was a five-year window we gave those, those people to use that. That is closing this summer, so we're moving forward with the closing of the rear landfill. And basically, that will be increasing what you see out there now by about 50%, so almost double the operational area for the highway and sanitation division. We'll be getting a proposal from Camp Desrona Key to do the study and prepare plans and specs, and hopefully get out to bed this summer and through construction, probably be about eight to 10 months.
Okay. We're not going to see another park built on it. This is just going to be a closure and, and, and an open space, so, absolutely, not a, not a new recreational facility.
Correct.
Slakman-Daly?
Yeah, I have a question, I think, maybe is, is yours, Mr. Ditto, about the LED streetlight replacement program? Is that, are the, in the area where we were placed and went to LED, was the whole fixture changed, or just the light bulb changed?
The whole fixture was, was swapped out.
Oh, okay. So we could not simply switch out the light bulbs as we needed to?
Correct.
It requires more than that?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just, I'm just saying a whole word about that. Funny that you should mention LED streetlights. We are preparing to come before you next week to award and execute a contract. We finally have a contract ready to go with the new vendor for our LED streetlight program. You cannot just remove the guts of the fixture, you have to replace the entire fixture. It requires a new driver, and, and the new fixtures, of course, are modernized with built-in heat sinks. LED lighting is very, gets very hot. So we are moving forward with that. We'll be up before you next week with a contract.
What color will they be?
LED lighting comes in colors generally from, from 3,500 degrees Kelvin, that's the, the measurement of light, up to 55 or even 6,000 degrees Kelvin. Of course, the higher that the temperature is, the whiter the light, or actually, it gets whiter and then blue, becomes a bluish light. There's been some concern that's been raised by the, the Public Health Advisory Group that suggests that there's some literature out there indicating that, that LED lighting at certain Kelvin temperatures could be potentially a health risk. So we've looked at those, and we've built that into our specifications going forward. And it's generally accepted that any Kelvin temperature below 5,000 is, is fairly safe. It's the higher ranges that, that present a health risk. The lighting that we put out there in the pilot is around 5,000 degrees Kelvin. We are suggesting that the new streetlight programs going forward are going to be around 4,000 Kelvin. So it's going to be a, a yellow or light, not as bright.
A warmer color as opposed to a bluer color?
A warmer color, yes. Yes.
So what's, frame of reference, what's, what's the color of the standard? How will it be different from this, what's now the standard?
The current high-pressure sodium, I'm going to say around 2,500, 2,500 degrees Kelvin. It'll be brighter than the high-pressure sodium, but it'll be warmer than the pilot lights that we have out there in two or three areas.
And the fluorescents in this room now are what?
If I had to guess, I would probably say they were probably around 3,000, 3,500.
So in that range?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Peppa Sturgeon? Thank you very much.
I guess now, are we ready to move on? Have we, any further questions about either operating or capital improvements?
I have some other capital questions.
Okay, go for it.
Who would you like to ask?
I think we've, I, I think the fire chief has left.
Yep.
So maybe Sean can answer this question.
It'd be dangerous.
Okay. I noticed the expense on rehabbing some of these vehicles is kind of close to the cost of a new vehicle.
Well, there is one rehab that I know Chief Ford wants to reassess as it gets closer, and that's the rehab of Tower 1, the so-called Bronto.
Uh huh.
I think he's interested in looking at an alternative to rehabbing that. The other ones are pretty, pretty standard.
Okay, what, what, when you rehab it, what's the lifespan of the vehicle after that?
What, well, our policy is to rehab after 10 and 12 for a truck and a ladder, and replace after 17 and 20. So according to, you know, Chief Ford and prior fire chiefs, it's that rehab that really gets you the full 20, 20 years of the, of the vehicle. So when, say it another way, if you didn't rehab it, you probably wouldn't make it that, as far out as it otherwise would.
Okay. And that's because they tend to rust and that sort of thing?
Yeah, my understanding is they pull the, pull the truck off and fix everything. Pretty technical, huh?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I know how to put gas in my cows about it.
So I just had a quick library question for Mr. Flaherty. So at Coolidge Corner, you guys are actually sort of thinking about alternatives to, to rehabbing the branch, is that? Did I get that correctly?
Alternatives to what exactly? I had missed the last part.
Are you thinking of alternatives to rehabbing that branch?
What we're really focused on is, if you looked at the CIP, there was about $1.2 million worth of items that were going to come forward in the next two years. And it was felt that, that, I felt strongly that, that before we move forward with $500,000 for an elevator, or $400,000 for window repair, that we really make certain that that facility is where the library is going to be for the long term. When the Waldo Street Area Study Committee was doing its work last year, that group, independent of us, identified the library as a potential participant in that effort. At the same time, the library board began discussions, excuse me, about what their vision was for the library. So what you see before you in the CIP is a request to just take a breath, do an evaluation of the building, formalize the building program. We put together, I put together a, a beer bones version of a needs assessment moving forward. We need to really flesh that out, and then take a good look at the building, and determine the best way, if we're staying there, the best way to handle that moving forward. We have a location that we've, we've established where we had planned to place the elevator, but if we're going to make any kind of meaningful reallocation of space within the building, maybe that elevator would be in a different spot. And it just makes all the sense in the world to me that we, we, we do that work now before we begin spending the money that was planned.
But you do still want to have a venue in that neighborhood?
Oh, absolutely. Coolidge Corner is the hottest-
It's the hottest library.
Coolidge Corner is the, I don't try to miss an opportunity to say this, it is the busiest branch library in the state. If it were a municipality unto itself, I think it would now be about the 32nd busiest library system in the state. So absolutely. The only interest that the board or I have would, in, in doing anything different there would be if we could enhance the level of service that we're currently able to deliver.
Okay.
Question from Ms. Gallentine. Erin.
Good evening. Erin, I want to ask you about the Brookline Avenue Playground proposal. I know you and I have been in discussion with some representatives of Brookline Youth Baseball. What, what's planned there so far? What opportunity do we have to, to possibly expand the program there based on private donations from people who are baseball enthusiasts in the town or interested in a premier baseball facility?
Well, the timing's perfect. We're looking to start the design review process late winter. So in terms of looking at all of the various uses and how we can best support all of them, it's really the time to look at, should we be looking at reorientation? And this specifically relates to the ball field. So are there opportunities to better serve the various user groups? And Brookline Ave. is one of those athletic fields that frankly serves most of the sports that we play in town. The, the capital item itself will cover full replacement of the playground equipment, incorporation of water play, and refurbishment of the athletic field. So it's the right time to talk about, are there changes we should be looking at in terms of layout of the park, orientation, and how to, you know, accommodate all the various user groups that rely on Brookline Avenue Playground?
So I can bring a message to Brookline Youth Baseball? How quickly do they need to?
I would say they really need to mobilize pretty quickly if they're thinking about some, proposing some type of major, some type of major change. I think we would want to get that on the table sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a.
Wait, don't go.
Um, I was happy to see the Brookline Reservoir Park on there for FY '17. I'm one of many who takes a walk there when I can. And so you're going to put in restrooms?
Well, the, we have had, that is something I get requests for every year, is a comfort station at Brookline Avenue. I would say, given that it truly is a multi-generational facility, it's the only stone dust track that we have. It's good for all ages, all abilities. The Park and Recreation Commission really felt that that is a request that we should honor, and it was, it was the time to do that.
And I just want to note when, that the, the pond or whatever, the reservoir itself is getting a lot of plant life growing in it. So, you know, that probably has to be kind of cleared out, too.
Part, part of this project is actually repointing the interior basin. So we will lower the level of the reservoir, which will give us an opportunity to clean it out a little bit. We do actually, though, we work with the Water and Sewer Division, and we remove some of that vegetation that comes to the surface at least a couple times a year.
I have one other quick question. I don't, is the Kraft Family Athletic Field your project, too? So when they say it's nearing 15 years old, do they mean in fiscal year 19 when this project is scheduled for?
That's right, well, in fiscal year.
Because I, I remember I was on the board when we opened that, and it wasn't 15 years ago.
See how time flies.
Well, honestly, I base some of this, you know, on when my children were born. We are, we are, we are.
Well, I've only been on this board about, you know, eight, three quarters years.
Seven and a half years in.
Yes.
So, you know, as we are looking at 2020, we'll be coming up to what would be 15 years, which is beyond what they're anticipating, kind of the, the life expectancy is. As of right now, we, we get tears, we replace, you know, we repair tears, we put in additional infill, we groom the field. We have gotten great value out of that athletic field. And actually, the cost to rebuild it is a little less than what it was originally because we can use that drainage layer. So we'll strip off the carpet, the infill, we'll have some laser grating to do, but other than that, we'll be able to sort of recycle and repurpose a lot of what's already there.
Okay.
You may want to reword.
Yeah, you want to reword the right.
Will be nearing 15 years in 2020 or?
Okay, all right, thank you. Good point.
It says it is nearing 15 years, and I suppose it is nearer than it used to be, but it's not really that near. Okay. Other questions for Ms. Gallantine while we have her? Oh, I, there's, there's a, there's something on here for a skate spot, which I've, of course, been hearing from kids for years that they want one, but where is this proposed to go? It doesn't say.
Well, Park and Rec has been working for the past three years with the Friends of Brookline Skaters. They've developed design guidelines and site selection criteria. And they use that whenever any park renovation project comes up to see if there's an opportunity for some type of skate-friendly element within the park. We have honestly received a lot of resistance in each park that we've gone to, and the Park and Recreation Commission really listens to the neighborhood. And so we have not found that perfect spot yet. We actually thought we had a really interesting location on Pearl Street, which is a little strip. And we had kind of a public meeting to talk about what could it be and would the neighborhood be interested in this? And could we make it kind of a vibrant plaza where skateboarders would also be welcome? And that pretty much met, or resounding no. So, so we are looking at now really simple spots and dots, which means sort of a skateable bench where skateboarders are welcome within, within the park. And I think it really is a problem because these skateboarders don't have any place within our community where they are welcome to skate within the parks and off the streets safely.
Well, I, I would just suggest you think about somewhere in Lars Anderson where they could be not quite so close to homes nearby because it is, can get noisy.
And part of the problem is access because we've talked about Lars Anderson, and the skaters just say we can't get there.
About Brookline Ave., far from, far from a lot of neighbors, Brookline Ave.
I think it's worthy, again, of taking our criteria and having the process and seeing if there's an opportunity there.
Slak Woszynski?
One note, I, I note that this is into the future. Robinson is slated for renovation at the same time that Downs Field is. So you just, you may want to, both of those serve the same neighborhood to have both of them out of commission at the same time.
Mm-hmm. And what we can, we can actually stage the construction such that we don't take them both, you know, off circuit at the same time. Yes, absolutely.
I have one last question about the swimming pool, which maybe that's Ms. Paradies?
Thank you.
I have to say, I feel a little, a little bit about the swimming pool the way I feel about the single tree water tank, that it always is showing up. It seems like, well, wait a minute, we just renovate, renovated this area. Why is it on here again for 16, for substantial renovation? Should we just do that?
Not this particular thing. I believe, and I have to refresh my memory, but I believe that has to do with some repointing and some structural work underneath the, the pool. There is some locker room repair.
But they're talking about the locker rooms again.
Yeah, and they were done, partially done. That was before my time here, so I'll be here six years, so it's probably 10.
It's just me getting old, okay.
Yeah.
And I start, when I start seeing these project, wait a minute.
No, there were partial renovations, but there were, we've, we've since patched some of the, the tile work in the locker rooms, but there needs to be some, some other work done in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other capital item questions? All right, then I think we are ready to move on to parking, no, tax classification. Sorry, tax classification. A related topic. So it turns out that the, when you worked out the numbers, things shifted a little bit.
Do, do you want to take the change orders?
We've already voted.
Well, you already voted.
Oh, Mr. Giggly, we did it.
It's good Tony got a taste of capital.
We didn't even need you. We just did it. All approved. I thought maybe it was here.
Yeah, keep, keep talking.
Fine.
Gary can wax poetic here while this.
Well, I just, I just noticed that in the, the last spreadsheet we got, the current CIP factor turns out to raise more money than we're permitted to raise.
Correct.
Which was kind of a weird phenomenon.
It is unusual. Gary McCabe, the chief assessor, Chairman Dewitt, that is unusual, right? That factor of 1.73 for the commercial, industrial, personal, we're now calling CIP for this discussion.
Right, not, not what we just talked about.
Right, for this discussion.
Not a capital improvement program, right.
When, when you.
You know, you could change that around and say like, personal, commercial, or something. So it just didn't have exactly the same.
Yeah, let's call it pick.
Commercial, let's just call it commercial. It's primarily commercial property.
Commercial.
Translates to a tax rate. And one of the, one of the results of, of what you do during the classification hearing each year is that we calculate a tax rate for both residential and commercial.
Right.
And those tax rates are rounded to dollars and cents and not beyond. So we apply that tax rate back against the, the assessment in total for that class, and then measure that back against the tax levy limit. And if you go over even by a dollar, you can't use that. So that's what's happening at the 1.730. I can tell you, it also happens at 1.731.
I saw that, too. And I thought, how very peculiar.
You'd have to go all the way to 1.732, heading in that direction, to avoid exceeding your levy.
Yeah, okay.
It does happen, but the majority of the options work out so that it does not happen.
Well, I, I'm going to tell you, I'm completely math-averse, but I am totally fascinated by the fact that the revenues, the levy that gets raised seems not to be what I would have thought a consistent path, curve, if that's the way you want to put it. And I, I'm actually not asking you to explain it to me. I'm just making an observation that it was very curious that in the set of examples you gave us, the dollar of the levy, the dollar amount of the levy at the lowest. Can you tell us which thing you're looking at? Because we're lost, I'm afraid. It looks like this. It doesn't have a name or a number.
It's a worksheet.
It's a worksheet. It was the last thing we got. Looks like this, looks like this, looks like this.
But those are yellow marks.
My yellow marks because I'm.
Okay, it's the separate sheet.
Of course, the public can't see it.
Sorry, folks.
That, that information was presented on the screen last week.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Right. It's, it's in the packet, it's labeled at the top, just 12. And on the bottom, it says FY '14 Further Expanded Tax Rate Worksheet. Okay. I, I would like every member to find it in order for this conversation to continue. And anyway, I was really just raising the point that the way the numbers work out is not linear, I think is perhaps what I'm asking you?
Yes, and you're right. They are not.
I'm sure there's some algorithmic thingy.
It's because the dollars and cents have to be rounded to cents. You can't have a tax rate that, for example, is $11.37. You can't do that. It has to stop at 37 cents.
Got it.
So under the 1.73 commercial factor, the residential tax rate would be $11.38. So what I presented in that worksheet was looking on either side of that 1.73, which was the factor that was selected last year, and looking in between once.
You gave us some intermediate points.
Intermediate, like, correct. In both of the halfway between 1.72 and 1.73, and then the other side halfway between 1.73 and 1.74 were allowable rates because it puts you under that levy limit.
Right, right, interesting. I don't understand it, but it's interesting.
And the, the, what we're, we've presented, the assessors have presented both last week and in prior years, are rates that get you up as close as you can to that levy limit?
Sure.
Because that's our understanding of what we want to do.
Sure.
Right.
I, I do understand that.
Right.
Okay, so you probably have something you want to present to us, or are we just asking you questions?
I'm available to answer any questions you have. I have no additional.
Okay.
Information other than these sheets, and I can answer, as I just did, the information on the sheet.
Sure, all right, fine.
And my understanding is that Selectman Banker has some additional information as well.
Right, if, if we can get it up and I can get this to work.
While he's getting that, though, did you say 1.732 would work? Two, two, no, two, five works. Well, I don't know.
1.732, I also calculated, and yes, that, that is a, a factor that will work. And I have the information, I've, I've brought along the information about that. If you're interested in, in considering that, I have those specific factors. I can tell you if, if you'd like, Selectman Daly, what the tax rates would be?
Yeah, okay.
At that 1.732 commercial factor, uh, three, 1.732 would be $11.37 and $18.63.
Well, that's interesting.
Almost the same as 7.35.
Yeah, so the.
Exactly.
The residential stays the same as 1.735.
Correct, again, because of rounding.
Grounding, okay.
You can't have $11.37 point something cents, right?
And you would probably give up some revenue.
And that's below what you're giving up.
Oh, you would give up some, okay, forget that.
Yeah, and, and in fact.
Okay.
These, these.
Forget that. Not giving up anything.
Levy figures are a little different from what was the assumption in the financial projections in our forecast. The, the actual levy numbers are slightly different from.
Okay.
I can also tell you that one of the next steps in the process each fiscal year is that we have to submit a recapitulation of our finances for the Department of Revenue to review and approve. And during that process is actually when the tax rates themselves get approved. What the outcome of your hearing, in the eyes of the law, is, is a vote on a shift option or a shift factor.
Right, right.
So, you know, we'll have one more look at those rates when we finalize that recap sheet later this week and into next week. These are the best estimates that we can make as accurate as possible as what those rates will be. Right. Based on, again, on that maximizing our levy assumption.
Well, so Mr. Kluckner, if we go with 1.735 versus 1.725, you'll have an extra $31,000 to, uh?
Well, we always have some rounding factor. We never can get the tax levy right at the.
No, no, I'm saying we're giving you a gift there of 31,000.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Melissa just to go to the next slide. At, at the last time we looked at this, last week's meeting, we basically had the first data, which is the surrogate that the Assessor's Office has used, the median valued property in the class and the effect of various tax classifications on that median property. And we are now at 1.73. If you stayed at 1.73, the median commercial property, its tax would increase by 5.9%. Condos by 3.1%, single-family homes by 1.4% because there's been a large growth in the values of commercial properties and condos relative to single-family homes. The, you know, obviously with, these all use the residential exemption, and with the residential exemption, condominiums are. exemption, condominiums are, their effective tax rate is well below the effective tax rate of the average single-family home. So the discrepancy between single-family homes and condos in the increase from year to year is, you know, unavoidable, but, you know, not, and when you see the dollar amount, not a real fairness issue. But if you were here, what you really can compare is condos and commercial properties. And if you looked at the numbers that we got last week, you'd say, well, we should go to a 1.70.
I absolutely cannot read the red things.
The red are 3.5 percent and 4.0 percent.
Okay, thank you.
That's about as close as you can get within this range of 1.7 and 1.75. The other measures that we've looked at, or that I've looked at over the last couple of years, has been taking, and let me thank Sean and the assessor's office, Mr. McCabe and Rashid in the assessor's office for pulling this information together again this year. If you look at the median tax, look at the tax increases a dollar function over the median tax in fiscal year 13, you'd end up at a 1.71 classification. Both condos and commercial properties would be at 3 percent. Next slide. If you look at the percentages of tax increases, you move closer to where we are now. You'd probably end up at your crossover point at a 1.72, which is very close to where we are now. Interestingly, and this, the last data, which is, how many properties, what percent of the properties actually get a reduction in taxes, you'll find that at 1.73, which is where we are now, 6 percent of single-family homes would see their taxes reduced, 4 percent of condos, and actually 13 percent of commercial properties would find their taxes reduced at a 1.73, which reflects what we talked about last week, the fact that different segments of the commercial market are going up at different rates. And the median is going up, there's a spread across the commercial market, much more than there is across the single-family or the condo market. You see that anywhere from 1.70 to 1.73, there's not a substantial change in either the single-family or the condo percentages seeing a reduction. If you look at who is getting their taxes reduced, you'd say, hey, we should actually increase the taxes on commercial properties. We should increase the classification to 1.74 or 1.75. Next slide. So, this is kind of the summary that I do every year, and the bottom line is that each one of these measures drives you in a different direction.
So is your conclusion, no matter what we choose, we can sleep well at night.
That's right.
Here's the interesting thing, though, not a single one of those categories optimizes 1.73.
Right, right. It's really, the different measures of impact, some would push you in one direction, some would push you in the other direction. The impacts on the various property classes, I think, are much more dramatic this year than we've seen in the past. The divergence between the commercial assessments and the residential assessments. My thought with this is, and we can go to the next slide, that we're, we either stay where we are, if, I know, Selectman Daly, you asked a question about the commercial market last week. If you wanted to give some break to the commercial properties, you would go to 1.72 from where we are now. I know that the Chamber of Commerce said, why don't we, let's just stay at 1.73. If you wanted to recognize, try to smooth the impact on commercial properties, you could go to 1.72. Because there are so many single-family properties and condos, and so few commercial properties, the dollar impact on the median single-family home of going from 1.73 to 1.72 would be an increase of $12 in their tax. The condo increase would be $4 in their tax. That would give $126 tax reduction to the median commercial property. So I just throw that out there. You know, I personally would be comfortable staying at 1.73 if there's some.
Apparently, we can't.
We can't.
It would be 3.5, yeah. 3.5, which would increase it somewhat.
2.5 or 3.5, and you'll be pretty close.
Or 1.732, we could go to, give up some revenue. 1.72 would provide something of a benefit to commercial properties at a relatively small cost to the single family, to the median single-family and condo properties.
Well, I have to say, your discussion this year is leading me in the 1.72 direction. Because we can't land at 1.73. 1.735, it seems to be further away from what you're saying is the optimal point. And I don't really, the 1.725, I don't really want to leave any excess capacity on the table.
Can you go back to slide, I think it's three? That's the guy. Now, in the commercial line, the 13 percent at the 1.73 or 1.74 level, are those primarily smaller commercial properties or larger commercial?
Small, small.
So, so the shown reduction, you know, across the whole line on commercial, the smaller ones are primarily benefiting.
Correct, because they're.
The rate of change.
Yeah, if I could just reemphasize what's happening, it's the basis in this tax that's shifting. The value, the assessed value, didn't change. It changed, but not uniformly. So, and it may have changed differently for individual properties within the commercial class. In fact, it did, all right. So that's why you're seeing, Selectman Banker, what you saw when you analyzed the data, was that the commercial market is acting differently depending on the property type and its location right now, as it comes out of this recession that we're in. Whereas the residential market is acting more uniformly. So this is the result of that. But, so, you know, an individual property could go from, a commercial property could go from a reduction in tax based on no change in its assessment, because there's a reduction in the rate, to, you know, a large increase because the property value has increased. So, you know, that's why you're seeing these numbers, that if you're just looking at the percent change in the tax, don't seem to match up, because the value shift. Overall, our tax base shifted a little bit less than a half a percent. It went, the residential class of property in Brookline, last year made up 90.5 percent of all properties last year. This year, it's 90.2 percent. So, you know, the residential got outpaced a little bit by commercial. But within that commercial, there was, you know, lots of variety in the change.
And that's really what you see in the last bullet.
That's what you're seeing.
This gives you a high rate, least left on the table, if there we can hold this duration of percentage impact.
I would like to add, if Chairperson Dewitt, one additional bit of information that you may not have.
That's what I'm going on.
That when I went to the state revenue department, form that we'll ask you to sign after your vote.
Yep.
And it's a form that is online, and we enter the numbers, and it calculates the tax rates, and calculates the excess levy capacity in a similar way that I've calculated on that worksheet. But I'm going to share with you that the numbers came out differently, and I'm having a hard time explaining that. At the 1.725 shift, the 1.725.
Yep.
Shift, I gave you an excess levy capacity number of.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. The state comes up with 63,000 on that.
Oh, really?
And that's the only one that was different.
Okay, well.
And I can't explain.
I like, no, 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 right. I like 1.72. That's my favorite.
1.72, yeah, I'm going to go with that also.
Yeah, I'll bite.
And I would suggest that we do the 20 percent residential exemption, as usual.
Are there questions or comments for members of the board?
No. My comment is what I said. I think you can justify almost any tax classification, and.
But in case Stanley's watching, or when he calls us tomorrow, what, again, was the difference in his?
$12 and $4.
$12.
And I will say that Stanley, being Stanley Spiegel, was certainly more concerned about the residential exemption than about this classification. I think largely because the impact of this, given the fact that 90 percent of the properties in town are residential, the per-property impact is relatively small, moving from one to the other.
Well, I have to say, I truly appreciate Selectman Banker's additional analysis, and Mr. McCabe's, the assessor's additional analysis. But I also think Selectman Banker's comments suggest that there is not a whole lot of difference here. So I think we're ready to move. And if you look at your sheet, that's 12-22, it's got some proposed votes on it. So what I will propose is that we take the first item, which is 1.72, up. That would be the motion. And then I think we have also a motion on the residential exemption. So maybe what we want to do is begin with a motion to approve a residential exemption as defined in General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5(c), in the amount of 20 percent of the averaged assessed value of all Class 1 residential properties, parcels within the town of Brookline, provided, however, that such exemption shall be applied by the assessors only to the principal residence of a taxpayer. This vote will apply for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2014, ending on June 30, 2015.
No, I correct that. July 1, 13.
13, sorry, 13 to 14, 13 to 14, I'm sorry, 13 to 14, right. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then, having established the percentage residential exemption, we can then go to a motion that the Board of Selectmen votes to adopt a residential factor of .921977, which represents a commercial, industrial, and, what's the?
Personal.
Personal factor of 1.720, and the following corresponding tax rates. Residential would be $11.39 per thousand, and commercial would be $18.50 per thousand. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Have we done it, or is there more?
You have, thank you very much.
Okay, and then you will put this into your spreadsheet and come back and tell us whether we got it right.
Correct, and I expect that we did.
Okay, good.
But the tax rates aren't actually approved tonight, that's.
We understand.
The form, I'm going to leave with you, that requires signature, also has a place for the town clerk to sign to attest that the hearing was properly posted. And you'll see a place for that, although I haven't taken it to him yet, because we didn't know which one we were going to sign.
Very good. We will follow your directions. All right. And the next item is long-term parking meter rates. We have a proposal before us, having to do with the fact that the Brookline card is terminated, I believe, and no longer available as of December 31, which means that people can't use a card for a portion of our parking meters. However, we have a program to replace the meters with cards that will accept credit cards. Would you like to carry on?
Madam Chairman, I'm Mel Klackner, Town Administrator, and I'll move to this podium because there may be some other questions answered by some of the other staff that are here. But as you pointed out, we have a problem whereby the so-called Brookline card, which is a PXT smart card, is being terminated at the end of this month. I would also mention that if anybody does have balances on their card, that there is a process to get refunded, or you can use them up if you want to park a lot over the next few weeks. But there is a process to do that. But, so I convened a group, being involved heavily in meters so far in my tenure here, and decided that, you know, wanted to continue the momentum we had, and sort of the framework that we had in evaluating our.
Can we talk about meter momentum?
Meter momentum, yes, I guess. And so, the first thing we tried to do was find out whether there was a suitable alternative to the PXT smart card. And we quickly determined that the so-called smart card that has been in use is really not a viable financial or business model going forward. Same reason why PXT is going out of this business. We looked at other alternative models, everything from apps on your smartphone and other things, and just found that there really wasn't an approach that was cost-effective and convenient for the users. And that includes our enforcement personnel, too, we took into consideration. But what we did believe that was appropriate was just to essentially expand our current model out into these long-term meters, which is, as you know, are these digital, single-spaced digital meters, called the IPS meters, on-street, and then taking advantage of the multi-space meters in multi-space lots. And the fact of the matter is, we do have three machines left over from our prior use, and we're proposing to use those in the multi-space areas. So what we're proposing to do is to avoid having people carry around big bags of coins for these long-term meters, which can be 10 hours at a time, is to introduce our existing meters that we've used to expand, the single-spaced digital meters and the multi-spaced meters in these long-term spaces. We need some revenue to do that, and so we are proposing a 25 cent increase, generally speaking, to all these long-term meters. And then, further than that, we also are proposing to increase the rate in certain spots that are really accommodating people just taking advantage of low-cost parking in our community, much like that was happening at the Lower Beacon Street for Fenway Park games. And so we have proposed an additional increase in some of those rates, especially along Brookline Ave and some of the commuter areas, as a way to generate some revenue to offset the cost of this expansion or this convenience to allow credit card transactions at these meters. I would note that the Transportation Board did take up this matter last week and voted unanimously to adopt these rates. Todd is here to speak on that, if you have any questions. But at this point, I think I'd stop and take questions that you may have.
Okay, questions? Yes, Selectman Banka?
Yeah, Todd? So, parking meter rates, as you know, is one of the issues that the override study committee is looking at. My, and I'm in agreement with the increase in rates, I just wanted to focus on the first three, Brookline Ave, Chapel Street, and the Longwood MBTA stop. Essentially, those areas are being used as parking by LMA employees, Longwood Medical Area employees. Area employees, who are parking there because it's cheaper than parking in the garages at the Longwood Medical Area. My question is, why stop at eight PM? Why not have parking, why not charge these fees past eight PM to midnight, to one to two AM, in order to grab the third shift at, at, at the Longwood Medical Area? What are, what is our competition in terms of the garages at the LMA or on-street parking at the LMA?
Essentially, what you have before you was a very narrow, just to address the issue of the P X T going away, bringing in IPS and offsetting those costs. The Transportation Board also, last week, wanted to dive in to extended meter hours at Brookline Ave., Chapel, and Longwood with actual the support of the Precinct One Town Meeting members who attended that meeting and, and voiced their, their support for that. And they want to look at actual meter rate increases that perhaps are even more in line than a dollar fifty.
Yep.
With the competition, you're not competing with the Boston meter rate of a dollar twenty-five in those areas. There's very few curbside meters within the LMA that are provided by the city of Boston. None of them are long-term. They are all short-term, one to two hours. With our competition, essentially, starting at about five-thirty in the morning, you will see Brookline Ave., Chapel, and Longwood MBTA cars start to come in, filter in. They, right now, because it's the P O M meters, they sit in their car, they eat breakfast, they get out around six, six-thirty in the morning. The old, their old-style meters, they turn on at seven, and they start filling it up, the meters, with either the P X T card or coins. There's actually two shifts that we've tracked. The first shift goes to about three o'clock. So they fill up the meter to about three-thirty, they walk to the LMA, they go to work, and they come back, they leave, and in comes a second shift that fills the meter up to eight PM. Typically, those cars are actually there until about ten PM, eleven PM, depending on when that shift ends. We are directly competing with the LMA garages. We are. They approximately are, for long-term, thirty dollars or more to park all day at the LMA garages, if they were to come in in the morning and park all day. Even the shuttle lots that are in Newton, Brighton, and other communities, if they were to park there and take the shuttles in, they're actually more than our dollar, even the dollar fifty per rate, and they're not as close. They have to take the shuttle in. So that's why we start seeing these, these spots fill up, and they are at a hundred percent capacity throughout the entire day. We also, as part of this, the police tracked licensed places, see who was parking there, were they possibly self-Brookline residents, or, or local two-hour residents, or people in the area. And what we found was a hundred percent of the license plates that we tracked on, on different days were from out of town. So this is most certainly LMA. And the Transportation Board was eager to jump into this. I held them back, only because I have been talking to the override study committee. My understanding is they are gonna make several recommendations regarding meter rates in general, as well as targeted meter rates in select areas. And I didn't want to step on their toes and sort of put this forward without getting their input.
So, override study committee?
Well, I, you know, as Todd has said, this is one of the revenue issues that we're looking at. And, and I think it's, I, I certainly will support this at this point, but I think we ultimately will be much more aggressive than this in terms of timing. I, what I had not heard is what the, the feedback was as, as to what the market will bear here. And I'm wondering, I, I wasn't aware that that has been resolved yet.
With respect to the, the dollar fifty?
Right. No, no, with, with respect to the, well, with respect to the dollar fifty and with respect to the time. I don't think that we've decided yet on what will maximize the town's revenue from these meters.
No, no, we haven't. We, we've looked at, you know, we recently, these meters were fifty cents. We brought them up to a dollar when we did the two thousand and ten rate. We also extended them. They were eight to six. We brought them back to seven AM start, per actually the user's request, and moved them up to eight PM to try to capture. I think we, you know, as part of the work at, following the override study committee recommendation, is to go out there and to track how long those vehicles are staying there. Are they staying there till eleven PM, ten PM, midnight? And, and I think if that's the case, then our meters should reflect the, the usage by the out-of-town commuter parkers. One of the good things about IPS meters is that they are via the cloud, and reprogramming them would not require us to go out and reprogram every single meter. We can do it from a desktop. So we decide to move them up Monday through Friday, let's say, to ten PM or eleven PM. We can do that on the desktop. And if Saturday, there's some residents in the area that want to use them, like a Chapel Street, for instance, because you have the Longwood Towers there, we could set the Saturday right, Saturday rate down lower, or, or the hours down lower, if we have that residential usage. So the, the new meters that we were planning provide a lot more flexibility for that.
What is the specific usage here at midnight or one in the morning? Are, are they occupied then?
We haven't done tracking yet. We, we would have to do the tracking. We've done tracking up to eight PM.
It may be, it may be that that shift is finding adequate parking on Boston streets.
My, my guess is the third shift probably finds adequate parking elsewhere, only because we have the two-hour rule. I mean, I'm sorry, the, the, the no overnight ban.
No overnight. So come two AM. So they have to move.
They have to move where they face a thirty-dollar citation.
Selectman Daley?
Well, I realize from the, the financial point of view, raising the rates and having these occupied, fully occupied all the time, is obviously the direction the override study would like to go in. I have actually tried to find a parking space at these meters when I've had a doctor's appointment. And I would like them not to be such long-term meters, because I can never find a parking space there, and I have to go pay for the expensive garage.
That, that's a policy issue that would have to be a trade-off, that, that certainly should be put forward as we have this discussion to the Transportation Board. We did carve out five meters in the area of the dog, of the park, because we were getting that feedback from park users, especially the Green Dog Program, that could never find parking to utilize that park. So they have carved out those five, whether they'd be willing to carve out more.
Tell me where those five are, so I can...
They're, they're right at the park entrance, right, right near the precinct.
Will they be short-term? That was my question, too. Brookline Ave. is not just parking for LMA. There's, there's, you know, on a given Saturday afternoon, there's youth soccer going on there, and, and there's lots of demand by local residents for, for parking there.
Well, that, that's, that's what I went back to the technology. One of the benefits of the IPS meters is that we can do those different rates on different days. So if you're telling me during the daytime, you want to make them short-term on Saturdays to accommodate the, the youth soccer program and really discourage the LMA usage on a Saturday, or, then we could build in those separate rates by day.
I do think, though, that you need some kind of stickers or hangers or something just to let people know if you're changing the ground rules, you know?
Yeah.
Because it's, it's kind of unfair to suddenly...
I can imagine the signage, it's gonna start looking like New York City, you know, every day has different rules.
The, the benefit of the IPS meters is actually, when you walk up to them, that first screen that you see tells you the rate at that time.
Today, your rate is?
Essentially, you can program it to say, today, your rate is, or this rate per hour.
Okay.
Yeah, but even so, I, I don't know, I don't know if you, you kind of expect it to be the same. So, I mean, if you put a sticker on it, watch for changing hours or changing, you know, something.
Do you, do, do you have information about the weekday and weekend usage at these particular areas at this point?
Um...
At least preliminary information?
Preliminary information, Brookline Ave., Chapel Street, Longwood MBTA are heavily used, a hundred percent capacity throughout the week. On the weekend, there's some differing information. The early information we had, going back to when we looked at it in two thousand and ten, was that it was also filled on Saturdays.
Well, because the health people...
All three spots?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, all, all three spots.
There's a lot of people that have doctors' visits there that aren't going on Saturday, but the, the hospitals are probably fully staffed.
The Precinct One Coalition would like us to look at Chapel Street again. They think that there is some capacity there to make it available for the residents, even after a certain amount of time. So that's one of the things that we would look at when we go through that process. The Kent Street eleven-hour meters, these are part of the Brookline Village Commercial Meter Program, where the merchants pay twenty-five dollars for the year, and then they pay the meter rate. Those are full Monday through Friday, Saturday. They're virtually, they're probably fifty percent capacity of that. Beacons Field MBTA is about eighty percent capacity, weekdays, always available during the weekend. Same thing with Brookline Hills MBTA, unless there's a special event, or, or summer classes, or the, the Tappan Street angle parking fills up, then you'll get some of the parks, some of the, the pool users and the gym users will go in there. But generally, you can find parking in there as well. And Station Street is actually part of the Kent Street program. So it's the same thing as Kent Street.
Good.
Okay. So are we ready? I mean, this is obviously a first step. Once these meters are installed, where they can be programmed, we can certainly modify them as the data indicates, right?
Just, will, will this increase in cost cover the cost of the meters?
Yes, it will. This is built in. The incremental payback, I think it's actually, Sean did the figure, I think it's less than a year to pay back for the initial capital cost to buy the meters themselves, and then everything after that is, goes into the general fund.
And even more than this down low, folks.
Is that, so you're not planning on the long-term meters on Upper Beacon Street? You're not planning on...
We're starting here. These are the ones that have very high usage of the park card and very high occupancy rates.
Because, yeah, I was gonna say, there's always spaces at those other one...
Yeah, the other ones are run between fifty to sixty percent occupied during the weekday.
Yeah.
So there's always spaces available. Eventually, the Transportation Board would like to move over to a hundred percent IPS in those areas. So that's where the, the Transportation Board's thinking is, is to move over and to, to leverage these kind of meter rate increases to pay it off.
Okay.
But again, that's more to come.
We ready to take a vote here? All right. I move that we approve a rate increase for the following long-term parking meter locations. On Brookline Ave., Chapel Street, and in the Longwood MBTA area, the rate would be increased from one dollar to one dollar fifty cents per hour. On Kent Street, eleven-hour meters, at the Beacons Field MBTA, the Brookline Hills MBTA, and Station Street MBTA, the rate will increase from fifty cents to seventy-five cents per hour. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you all.
Todd, thank you very much, Todd.
And finally, we have a fat packet of license renewals, most of which we will be able to approve in, let's say, en masse groups. But there are a couple of separate votes that we'll have to take, and I'll try to walk you through it as quickly as I can. Let's see. Which ones are we gonna start with? Coin-operated amusement devices. Oh, rats, where'd they go? Hmm, got my regs.
I lost my coin-operated amusement devices.
Let me just take this one. There's not too much to it. These are all...
Fourteen dash one.
Yeah, right. And it's buried in my, oh, there it is. I shuffled these around too much. These have been inspected, and the police department has no objections. So I would move that we approve renewals of the coin-operated amusement device licenses for two thousand and fourteen. And I'm not going to enumerate them. I'm just going to say for the named license holders attached, in this case, there are only two, but in all the others, there will be multiples. Kate, is that all right? So all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next is common victular licenses. Those are just for food service. Police, fire, and health departments have reviewed these. There is one situation, which I don't even understand, and I, I never had the opportunity to get an answer to my question, so we, we may just go ahead with it. But the Planning Department indicates on page fourteen dash one thirty-seven, a complaint about a license holder at twelve-twenty-three Beacon Street, but it's not explained, and there is no quote "attached detailed report."
I think it's in the original version of the common victulars.
Oh, really? I didn't, I don't think I have that one here. Actually, I think I looked through that, and I didn't see anything.
Yes, fourteen...
Do you find it?
Well, complaint.
Yep. Because I don't have that. Okay, great.
What address Beacon Street? What address Beacon Street?
Twelve-twenty-three.
Fourteen thirteen.
It's on page fourteen dash thirteen. There's two sets of these. There's one that is handwritten on the front, twelve-nine thirteen, which was a revised version, and that's the one I've got. I didn't bring the earlier version because I thought it wasn't relevant, so anyway, but we've got it.
Signage issue.
Yeah, apparently. So we could hold this one until the Planning Department has an opportunity to deal with it.
Yes, fine.
Okay, so we'll hold. And then for further information, just be aware that we're going to do several with conditions, and that is that they're subject to final approval by the health and fire departments. And then, for informational purposes, there are actually five businesses that will no longer be in operation, and therefore, those licenses will not, excuse me, will not be renewed. So if, if everybody's sort of on board with this, I'm going to move that we approve the common victular licenses, the renewals for two thousand and fourteen, as they are detailed in our packet, starting on page fourteen dash one thirty-nine, with the following separate items. Two-oh-two Washington Street, seventy-five Harvard Street, five-hundred Harvard Street, and one thousand and nine Beacon Street, fourteen-oh-two Beacon Street, and sixteen-fifty-nine Beacon Street should be renewed, subject to final approval by the fire and health departments. The, and then there are two more, one forty-one Cypress Street and two fifty-three Harvard Street should be renewed, subject to completing the filing of appropriate forms and a fifty-dollar late fee payment, plus payment of any outstanding taxes. Then, finally, we will hold approval of twelve-twenty-three Beacon Street, for which a complaint and, an issue needs to be resolved with regard to signage, and when that's been addressed by the Planning Department, they can bring it forward to us. Okay? Is everybody more or less on board?
Yeah, I, I just want to, you, you started with the list beginning on page one thirty-nine, and there are a number that are not in business at this point, and I just want to see...
They're not included. I've already checked.
Okay, so...
They're deleted.
They're already deleted.
Yep.
And that was my question.
Yeah. I just said for information, there are five no longer operating.
All those five are not on...
Right. Not on the list.
Can the record reflect, please? I'm recusing myself on common victular, entertainment, liquor licenses on the following establishments, Mission Cantina, Public House Restaurant, Osaka, Village Fair, and Paris Crepes. So, so if you put that in, I'll just say, each time we vote, I'll note that, subject to my abstention.
Okay, good. All right. Kate, are you ready for us to move forward? All right. So all in favor of the vote that I have proposed with the conditions, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Subject to my recusal, aye.
And Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Then, in entertainment licenses, they're recommended, but there's one item, which is the same item that we've held in common victular for entertainment, twelve-twenty-three Beacon Street. So we should hold twelve-twenty-three Beacon Street until they have complied, but otherwise, I believe, all of the entertainment license renewals have been approved for renewal. Therefore, I move that we approve the listed entertainment licenses... Therefore, I move that we approve the listed entertainment licenses that begin on page fourteen dash seventy-four, but we will hold, um, Takusan Sushi at twelve twenty-three Beacon Street, uh, subject to approval by the planning board for compliance. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Subject to recusal, aye.
And Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, and then we come to food vendor renewals.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? I didn't see Kirkman's Market in there. Don't they have a food vendor license?
I don't think, I don't think so. You know, they used to have a common victular license, which they may still, but I don't think they have a food vendor license.
All right. I didn't see them in the list, and that's one I need to recuse on, but, uh.
Oh.
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. Okay, and this one is pretty straightforward. Um, they've been approved for renewal. There are two closed for business, not filing for renewal, and those two are excluded from the list beginning on fourteen dash one eighty-six. So I will move that we approve the renewal of food vendor licenses for two thousand and fourteen, um, on the list starting at, um, fourteen dash one eighty-six. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, then we have inholder licenses, and there is actually a comment, um, that you'll find on page fourteen dash one twenty-nine. Um, I, I, I think you should mention this for information purposes because the, um, police department did look at utilization of services and came up with only two locations where they felt it was worth mentioning. One is the Holiday Inn at twelve hundred Beacon Street, the other is Trader Joe's at thirteen oh-nine Beacon Street. Um, in both cases, they, uh, indicate that the operators have been fully cooperative, um, but clearly they have, um, for whatever reason, um, been a location which has required more police attention than others. So, and otherwise, um, these, um, inholders have, um, approvals, so I will move that we approve the renewal of inholder licenses. Actually, the inholders do not include Trader Joe's, I don't know.
I was gonna say, why, why is Trader Joe's?
Well, because, because, because it was on the report.
I was trying to figure that out, okay.
It was on the report.
Same, same.
Yeah. Um, there are two inholders, a Holiday Inn and the Marriott, and I move that we approve them. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, then we have liquor license, which is a little more complicated.
Can, can I also ask on the liquor license, we have, we've had another, at least one other complaint about, uh, the noise at the cantina, um, since we spoke to them about noise issues. So I'm gonna propose that we hold that there. I didn't think of it when we were doing the food, the common victular.
I have to tell you, that is, I, I, I have been advised that without justification or cause, not doing this particularly on liquor is not a good thing. ABCC will overrule us.
I know, but we're meeting next week. Well, then.
I, we have such a full agenda next week, I really don't think, I mean, I'm happy to take it up separately, um, happy to deal with it separately. I'm aware of the complaint. We can have them come in, we can, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can hold a public hearing on the complaint.
So, why don't we do that? Um, notify the complainant?
Yeah, and, I mean, maybe what I should do is ask for us to reopen our vote on the common victular license. If you prefer, I do it there instead of the liquor license.
Well, that certainly is not gonna get us to the ABCC.
Okay.
Which, um, I don't disagree with you, Selectman Daley, I just know it makes things much more complicated.
I think you'd still have to hold a public hearing if you're gonna consider revocation or non-renewal.
Well, in fact.
Well, that's what I wanna do.
Right, right, so the other, the other point to be made is, this license depends on having common victular, and therefore they wouldn't be eligible for it without his, without a CV.
So is there a motion to reconsider the?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to reconsider the common victular licenses.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Abstain.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair abstains.
And then I'll move that we, we vote as we previously did, with the exception of the cantina.
Which you have to give its address.
Okay.
It's something on Beacon Street. It's in there, just find the address.
Ten something.
Yeah, all right, I can't remember the number.
Yeah, unfortunately, the liquor licenses are not in.
I think they're all in street order and.
Liquor aren't, common victular might be.
Oh, it's very confusing, I'll admit.
It's, um, ten.
Here we go.
It's, it's on page fourteen dash twenty. Selectman Daley.
Oh.
I think it's ten oh-four Beacon Street, if I'm not mistaken. I'm seeing, well, is it ten oh-four, ten thirty-two?
Ten, okay.
Let's see, where, which, which the address goes with.
Yeah, ten thirty-two Beacon Street. All right. Kate, are you with us? All in, all right, we voted that. To re, no, we voted to reconsider.
Yeah.
So, what's gonna happen?
Now, the motion is going to be, yep.
So, uh, we vote to hold, then what happens next?
Well, it's not gonna be held. We're not renewing the common victular license, so they will not be allowed to operate after December thirty-first unless they come in for a public hearing.
So next week, we have to deal with it.
Right. I hope we have enough time to do the public hearing.
Boy, do I, yeah, right. I mean, I don't even know if we have time to notice a public hearing. I, I don't think it's something you can just do.
Well, I'm, oh, I mainly just wanna yell at them for a few minutes and.
Well, I, I, rather than saying that, uh, I think, I think, um, what you really wanna do is to find out what the current situation is.
Yeah.
And provide the abutters a chance, and, and the cantina a chance to talk about the current situation.
All right, just be clear. If we do not renew the licenses, and they are not allowed to operate after December thirty-first, and we can't do the proper notices to which is what's required in order for this to be a public hearing next Tuesday, that is a very severe punishment for.
Okay, if, if you prefer, then we'll ha, call them in for a public hearing in January to say we're still having noise.
Yes.
And we are considering revoking the license we just grant them.
Yes.
If you wanna do it that way, we can do it that way.
We could do that, but I, I do feel.
Perhaps their counsel could speak to them in the interim.
I shouldn't even be sitting here at this moment, so.
That's true. Pretend you're not. All right, so, I think we are.
Okay, then I'll, we'll move the previous vote. We reconsidered, so we have to vote again, so I'll move the previous vote on common victular.
To approve as we did originally.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Abstain.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now, we do appreciate the concern, we'll get them in. Liquor, we approved regulations with a number of changes, one of which was that hours of operation should not be earlier than ten AM unless we gave a, unless we had a request, which we would grant for a different set of operating hours. If you look at the, um, second page, the inside page of the cover sheet, it's fourteen dash one ninety-nine, you will find twenty-one operations that were automatically assigned, the liquor hours, the eight AM start that the, uh, ABCC permits, and a couple of oddballs. Uh, Dorado Tacos actually is nine AM, um, Jerusalem Pita is nine AM, and oddly, Alary at two oh-two Washington Street, which hasn't even been open yet, got six thirty AM. So what we are now obliged to do is take a vote to change all of the eight AMs to ten AM, the nu, the two nine AMs to ten AM, and the six thirty AM to ten AM, and that will be se, the, each one of these, uh, license holders will be sent a cover letter explaining the new regulations, the hours of operation, and letting them know that they can request an earlier opening time individually. Um, so, the first step then.
Wait a minute, did they get notice that we were gonna change their hours?
Yes, and they came with their attorney and talked to us about it. We had a public hearing. Um, so, the first vote we should take then.
We're gonna change, we change the hours, they can serve liquor.
Right, this is just the liquor hours. Mostly, these were just automatically assigned because it's the earliest ABCC permits, and in fact, this is a cleaned-up list, there used to be a lot of other six AM ones because the common victular hours were being assigned to the liquor licenses, so we've, over the last several years, actually tried to bring these into compliance. Um, so the first vote we need to take is to modify the hours of operation for the twenty-one, um, license holders on this list, and I'm not gonna read them all out, but everybody can see them, and I think we should probably take, um, oh, maybe we can just do one vote, which, which would say that the hours of operation for service of alcohol on these twenty-one license holders that are on page fourteen dash one ninety-nine should be modified such that any day where the hours begin at eight AM, nine AM, or six thirty AM should be changed to begin at ten AM.
I thought we had to do those naturally. Oh, okay, okay. Actually, Patty and I agreed not to, but.
Okay, sorry.
Um.
Whichever way you wanna handle it. I thought we were gonna give them notice. Further thoughts?
I had two different conversations. Patty Korean said you could do this as long as they got the letter saying, but they could come and, um, change their hours, which would go with this license vote. In other words, they're gonna get documents, they're gonna get a packet of information.
So we did it, and you can.
We're, they're now in compliance with the regulations about which they were raised and for which they received an invitation to have, like, their hours changed, they can come and, so to.
Get them changed. That was, that was what Patty Korean and I talked about.
Cut.
So. Okay, so, just so that everybody understands, we had agreed that we would send a letter to these twenty-one operators indicating that the hours have been changed, and that they can come back to us and ask for them to be modified. They can come next week if they want to, or they can come in January some other time. It's not time-critical, but some people may want to have it changed effective in January.
And, and essentially, all that the ten AM time is doing is bringing the hours of operation on their licenses into compliance with the regulations.
Exactly.
That have been promulgated and voted.
And to which we, for which we held a public hearing, and they were invited. And to which some of these license holders came in person, others were represented by, um, attorneys, but I do believe they were all aware of the regulations changed. I think we worked very hard to do outreach on that. So our, our strategy was, we'd make the, vote the change tonight, give them a chance to, if they really want it to be re, if they want it moved back for January, they can come in next week. If they choose not to, they still can come at any time, and we would be able to change the license, the, the hours of operation. It's just that they have to request it. Some of these people will not care, I think there are two or three that probably will, um, just based on what happened at the public hearing. All right, so I think I've totally muddled the vote. I guess I wanna try again to say that I'm going to move that we amend the hours of operation for the listed license holders on page fourteen dash one ninety-nine, so that in any opening time, eight AM is changed to ten AM, nine AM is changed to ten AM, and six thirty AM is changed to ten AM. And we have, uh, we will send a notice letting the license holders know about the change and offer them the opportunity to come to us to have them, uh, changed to a different time if they like. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Are, are we doing, let me, I'm sorry. Are we doing anything with the, um, number three as part of this?
That'll be a separate.
Okay, then I say aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, so now we have simply, what we have done is put all of our license holders in compliance with the regulations. That's, that was that step. The, um, second step is to note that there are, um, one, two, three, four, five, six license holders who did not renew their licenses and will not be, uh, able to sell liquor after December thir, thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. I, I can read these out, but I will also let you know that I checked through the, um, printed list, and they're not included in the list.
Okay.
Um, but, but for the record, the following operators, license holders, are excluded from renewals, and I, I'm saying this for emphasis, cause I wanna be sure we don't make a mistake. Cafe Japones at ten thirty-two Commonwealth Avenue, Zen Noodle Bar at thirteen seventy-four Beacon Street, Zen Three Twenty at three twenty Washington Street, The Meat House at twelve eighty-five Beacon Street, The Brookline Spa at seventy-five Harvard Street, and a Brookline Butcher at four one four Harvard Street.
Because they did, none of those renewed their licenses.
They did not apply to renew their licenses.
You know, the spa, I think, is just closed temporarily, did, uh.
We know that, but they're gonna come back with a different business plan.
Okay.
They know about this, so.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I've, I have moved that those named license holders are not being renewed for two thousand and fourteen, and so the motion is that we will not renew those six license holders for two thousand and fourteen. All in favor, please say.
But, but, but we are renewing everybody.
Everybody else.
Everybody else.
On pages.
Yeah, right, we can do it all in one vote, so we're excluding the six that I just named, and subsequently, we are renewing all of the named license holders, starting on page fourteen dash two thousand and five?
Two, two hundred and five.
Sorry, two, two hundred and five, okay.
Two, two forty-seven.
Yeah, it's too late. Okay, all right, so, got the vote, Kate? All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Subject to, um, recusal, recusal, aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Recusal, it's too late, all right.
Chair votes aye.
I'm losing it.
I, it's too late, all right. We did liquor. Now finally, um, and again, this is something that I did not, um, realize until too late to follow up, but there are two health department, um, citations of license holders, and there wasn't an attached report, so I don't quite know what the, um, objection to them is, but I assume that we do not renew their licenses, um, at this time, and the health department will let us know what the issues were. We've got police and building department, and, um, the health department just says that it's recorded in an interdepartmental master licensing list, but doesn't explain. So, anyway, uh, I'm going to move that we renew the license, sorry, the lodging house licenses listed beginning on page fourteen dash two fifty-four, with the exception of ten twenty-nine Beacon Street and forty-four Marion Street, subject to health department, um, approvals. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
You have one more.
I know one more. Secondhand motor vehicle license renewals. Apparently, these are not complicated. The police and fire departments inspected them and recommend that we renew all of them, so I move that we renew all secondhand motor vehicle licenses as listed, beginning on page 14-274. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I believe that concludes the work of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, December 10th.